Good morning, everyone. I'm going to call this meeting to order, and at this time, I'd like to call for the invocation. Start our morning off right. And I have a friend and an elder from Corpus Christi Fellowship Church here with us tonight, today, sorry, this morning, and that's Mr. Mills. Welcome, sir. Would you all please rise? Please stand after the invocation for the Pledge of Allegiance to the United States of America and to the Texas flag.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, county commissioners. I will lift up mine eyes into the hills from whence cometh my help. My help comes from the Lord which made heaven and earth. He who will not suffer thy foot to be moved; he that keepeth thee will not slumber. Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and praise for your goodness, your grace, your mercy, your many blessings and benefits toward us. We lift up to you. Indeed, our county judge, we lift up to you. Indeed, our county commissioners, we lift up to you the business and the affairs of Nuasis County this day. We ask that you would move wondrously, that you would move mightily in every area indeed of concern to them. Give them wisdom, give them guidance, give them indeed the presence of your Holy Spirit in all it is before them. Indeed, cause Nuasis County to be all that you have purposed. And we give you thanks and praise for your presence with them this day. We thank you, we praise you in Jesus's name. Amen.
Commissioner, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored to Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much. Today is November 20th, 2019. We are on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse, 901 North Leopard. The time is 9:09 a.m. for the record, Madam Clerk. And I do certify that all commissioners and myself are here present, and so a quorum has been met. Timothy, would you come give us a safety briefing?
Good morning, Judge.
Morning.
Ma'am. We're meeting here today on the third floor of the Nuasis County Courthouse located at 901 Leopard Street. Restrooms are located on the right-hand side of the third-floor atrium as you exit the commissioners' courtroom past the Human Resources Office. A fire extinguisher is located at the rear of the courtroom. In addition, there are five fire extinguishers located throughout the third-floor atrium area immediately outside the courtroom. The AED is located on the right wall as you exit the restrooms between Human Resources and those restrooms. Participants responsible for dialing 911 in an event emergency are Tyner and Edward. Participants currently in the courtroom who are certified as CPR, the only one here now is Dale currently, with Margaret available if need be. In case of evacuation, our egress route will be down the atrium stairs immediately outside the courtroom. We will proceed through the double doors located on the lapin side of the courthouse and muster across the street in the parking lot. In the event that there is a need to shelter in place, we will remain in the building and await further instructions from the Nuasis County Sheriff's Office. Our shared safety topics for today are fire prevention and cooking safety. That concludes my safety brief.
Thank you. And you are certified in Stop the Bleed.
That's correct.
And I'm going to issue a challenge that we have many more folks that are CPR certified. I am feeling so much better. I have now spotted former Chief of Trauma, Dr. Osbert Blow. I'm now comfortable. Not that I wasn't comfortable that Dale was our only CPR, but my goodness, we ought to have lots of hands going up on that. At this time, I'm going to ask for the approval of minutes that are dated October 24th, 2019. It's several commissioners, October 30th, November 5th, and November 6th. I know you've had an opportunity to review, and I'd like to hear a motion at this time. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye? Oppose, same sign. We have some resolutions and proclamations this morning, and the first one, Tyner, is in opposition to the personal property tax exemption. We've been asked to bring this forward, haven't we?
By the Conference of Urban Counties. Just to give the background, I attended the last policy meeting for the judge. I had her proxy. One of the interim charges of the Senate is to study the economic dynamics of the current business personal property tax. It's the consensus of the CUC that if any of that goes away, all it's going to do is shift the tax burden to the citizens of your county and away from business. So I'd like to present this. The reason we're rushing this today is because the Senate is actually meeting on December 3rd, and we'd like to get this resolution in before that meeting.
And since you attended the policy meeting, you might tell the commissioners, all the urban counties, of course, we're a member of the Big Eight, are supporting this.
That's correct.
Okay.
So Judge, go ahead. Let's have discussion.
No move.
I've got a motion and a second. I'll call for discussion, Commissioner.
Judge, the only, I certainly like the language that says shifting, we don't want to shift property tax burdens to Texas property owners and maintain, and we don't want to shift it to the property owners. What I'm, what I don't want to do is just simply say, "Don't study it. Don't look at the economic dynamics because if there's a better way." And I get what you're saying. It sounds like there isn't a better way, but I also don't want to appear like we're anti-business because what the Senate apparently is trying to study, I guess, is if there's a way to help businesses. I don't really know all what's going on on this, and so I guess maybe there's some questioning in there. Maybe you can tell me a little bit more. I just don't want to make it look like this is an anti-business resolution is what I'm trying to make sure we don't do.
Understood.
You know, I think they're going to continue to study it. They are going to, you know, study crafting exemptions in different ways versus total elimination, but it is going to be studied, Commissioner.
Right. That's why I just, I just wonder if there's a way to tweak the language a little bit to where it doesn't.
Do you want to possibly amend to say, whereas the Texas Senate is studying the economic dynamics and we support, some sort of support language for the?
I guess in the now, therefore, we have resolved, it urges the Texas legislature to refrain from shifting property tax burdens onto Texas home and property owners, period, and maybe just take out and maintain the business personal property tax as is. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to tweak this a little bit so that it doesn't look anti-business, right? Because if they come up with some way that they can do it, I don't know how they can either. I don't think that's real, but I certainly don't want someone passing around a resolution that says we were anti-business because we didn't want to help look at this. So that's all I'm trying to avoid, so.
If it's the will of the court, we could put a period after property owners.
Sounds okay with that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have any problem with the whereas's. Eliminating or increasing exemptions for the business will shift the burden. We don't want to shift the burden, I don't want to shift it to property tax owners, no question, but I don't want it to be like anti-business. So if that, maybe that would be the way to do it, is just to put a period after owners?
What is the Texas Association of Business saying about this?
This is their resolution.
That's what I thought. Just so you know, I think Texas Association of Business asked, did approve this.
Texas Association of Business.
Well, I got this from the CUC.
Right, but I'm saying, that's what I asked, is does Texas Association of Business comment on the language?
I'm not sure.
Could we table this just till the end of today's meeting? Would you be so kind as to either email Adam Haynes or text him? And try to get a little bit more information about what the business, what some of the other folks are saying there before we make that rush to judgment? I'll tell you, the only hard part is when the CUC asks us to join forces with them. They tend to be really careful about the language. That's why it's so short. How about if we get a little bit more info from Adam, and we'll just table to the end of today's meeting? Is that all right?
Yes, ma'am.
I'll take a, may I have a withdrawal of your motion, Commissioner?
While we amend the motion to say that.
Thank you.
We'll wait till the end of business.
Thank you, appreciate that. Will you second that? Commissioner Modest, since you seconded it earlier, or was it Carolyn that seconded? Okay. And so, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign. Okay. The next one, Tyner, is very important. It's acknowledgement of an amazing career. And we have Dr. William Bergen, who's retired after 31 years as a local health authority for the city of Corpus Christi, Nuasis County Public Health District. Anytime we had a serious concern.
And Judge, we tried to get him here a couple of meetings. I believe Annette's here.
To represent.
To represent. We want to go ahead and get this done. I understand that he's going to Poland and Switzerland soon, and maybe we can get it to him before he leaves.
Wow, that's fantastic.
So I'll go ahead and read this, Judge.
Thank you.
Whereas Dr. William Bergen Jr. was born October 3rd, 1934, in Rockford, Illinois, to Mary Ellen Bergen and William Bergen Sr. In 1953, he graduated from Spring Hill College in Mobile, Alabama. He is married to Marilyn Bergen. They had five sons, William III, Patrick, Carl, Christopher, Jonathan, and was a guardian of three Vietnamese war orphans, Long, Hoa, and Du Trang brothers. Whereas in 1961, he attended medical school at the University of Nebraska College of Medicine in Omaha, Nebraska. He graduated with an M.D. degree. Whereas Dr. Bergen Jr. was a commander in the military, USA Medical Department Activity Commander, Darnell Army Community Hospital, and III Corps Surgeon, Fort Hood. Dr. Bergen received the following awards: Army Commendation Medal in 1966, Army Legion of Merit in 1975, With Oak Leaf Cluster in 1979, with Second Oak Leaf Cluster in 1983, A. Prefect's Professional Designator by Department of the Army and Expert Field Medical Badge in 1981. Whereas Dr. William Bergen Jr. became the Medical Director of Respiratory Care at Memorial Medical Center in Corpus Christi in 1998. Whereas Dr. William Bergen Jr. held the position as Nuasis County TB Control Officer starting in 1988 and went on to hold the position of Local Health Authority for the city of Corpus Christi, Nuasis County Public Health District, starting in 2005. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Nuasis County Commissioners Court hereby honors Dr. William Bergen Jr. for his many accomplishments as local health authority. The court further recognizes Dr. Bergen for his stellar medical career.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. And Annette, would you be so kind as to come to the podium? And if you'd like to make some comments, I know you worked closely with Dr. Bergen.
Yes, thank you, Judge. So, Dr. Bergen has served public health so well, we just are so grateful for him. I have not been with him for 30 years, but I've been with him almost 20 years. He was doing tuberculosis as the medical director for TB for those years prior. But he's just a wonderful human being, and we're, again, just so grateful for all of his service. He is truly a public servant in every aspect of that word. He's served not only the county, but also city council as well, and all of the physicians in this community. He's worked with all of them. He has served us during emergencies. He's gone out to the school districts with us. He's talked with the superintendents. He's talked with community partners to get everybody, as many people as possible, vaccinated during H1N1. He knows everything there is to know, you know? He said he was one of the creators of the iron lung. And we're just grateful to have worked with him, and he will always be a family member of public health. So, thank you.
Thank you for allowing us to honor him here, and we wish him the best on his adventures. When you've lived over nine decades, you're allowed to go anywhere you want to go.
I know.
And wonderful. And we just, perhaps if his adventures come back towards Nuasis County, you'll bring him by so that we can shake his hand.
Definitely.
And say, "Well done."
Thank you.
Thank you.
Didn't he help them to call me?
Tyner.
Just want to travel with him.
At this time, we have another presentation, and I'll let you take the lead there, but I've already spotted the honorable men in red this morning. Veterans and former members of the United States Marine Corps.
Yes, Judge. I understood from Maggie that the Marine Corps League had something for you, and I'd like to turn it over to them if they're here.
Okay, thank you. Gentlemen, welcome. Good morning. If you would just state your name for our county clerk in our record.
Judge Bill Bogard, Compton, Marine Corps League Coastal Bend Detachment, 430.
Gene Passahow. I'm the corpsman, the medical person in the thing. I'm a Navy chief, and I'm retired many years ago, and I think I know him. Charlie Company. I know Jag, too.
Bergen? Judge, I'm sorry, she's telling we didn't vote on Dr. Bergens.
Oh, we did not vote on that? Gentlemen, would you pause just for a moment and forgive my? We have a motion and a second. Thank you for correcting the record. All those in favor signify by saying aye on the resolution.
Aye.
For Dr. Bergen. Aye. Thank you. Sorry about the interruption. Housekeeping.
Yes, ma'am.
Go ahead.
Well, we would like to recognize your community service, your support for the veterans in the community, Nuasis County. I realize you come out to all the ceremonies at Cheryl Park. You make a presence. You were at the Vietnam Veterans Ceremony this past spring, first time I met you. And so, what we would like to do is present you with a honorary Marine Corps League member
Wow.
certificate. If you would so please accept this humbly from us.
It is humbly accepted, and it is a great honor coming from those who have served so honorably our country and anything I can ever do for you, for your fellow veterans, and to honor those who served in the Marine Corps, but particularly those that served in Vietnam. I was born in 1966, so in a very strange way, we're connected. And I had the privilege this past weekend, last weekend, to be a part of a select group that read all 3,700 names of all Texans that died in Vietnam, including my mom's favorite cousin, Desi. And it was incredibly moving. And for those of you that have not seen the exhibit at Surf Museum on China Beach, it's very, very moving. There are dog tags for every Texan who lost their life there in Vietnam. And because of this court, and it allows us to be able to support outside agencies, I've been a part of that, so I'm, it's a tremendous honor. But I'd like to accept it on behalf of myself and the entire court, if you would allow us to come down and take a picture with you. That would be our pleasure. Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
I know Dr. Bergen, too.
You do?
He's a great man. His wife came over. I gave my golden tree. And he came back and said to me, "Have you waited about 30 minutes? Waited 30 minutes, and he comes back with a big bag on his back, all these things for dogs."
That sounds just like him. Okay, shall we go over here to the?
Sure.
Tyner, can you be so good for the court? Oh, goodness. This will be treasured and on my wall by this afternoon.
How you doing, sir?
Good doing.
I didn't provide.
Oh, that's right.
I thought you were.
My wife will have a good time with him.
Yeah, I'm enjoying it.
I'll take a quick name.
Absolutely.
Is there a name? Okay. One, two, three. One, two, three.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Yes, thank you.
I don't know.
Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioner.
Public service gives you an entree to do some great things. And one of the greatest things it's given me is to be able to get close to not only our three military bases and supporting their mission, but also understanding the role that our veterans play. So I'm really thankful to all of you that give me that opportunity. We're going to proceed, commissioners, to the last item in this section, which is the presentation of the December 2019 Employee of the Month. You'll recall that we started this past year, and it's been an amazing opportunity for me to see how department heads honor their employees by submitting so many amazing applicants for this. And I only regret that I just choose one every month. But this month, it is a very special person that I've gotten to know because when we had a brief departure, absence really, of our emergency management coordinator due to maternity leave, she really stepped forward. And here is what her department head said about her. "Despite being new and still in training, she managed a substantial scope and workload of the Nuasis County Office of Emergency Management while maintaining a professional attitude. She exceeds expectations. She goes above and beyond, particularly during my absence. After running the office by myself for six months, I can truly understand the stress, pressure, and 24/7 involvement required to successfully run this office, and it is very difficult, often very difficult, to handle. She deserves this acknowledgement as she has performed beyond expectation." This, of course, was written about our Deputy Director for Emergency Management, Kathy Ard Blantner. And before we bring her up, let me just add my own personal comments because I work very, very closely with emergency management. In fact, for those of you that don't know, it's actually right in the organizational chart exactly underneath my office. I can testify that from the beginning, she came in and hit the ground running, not only when in the summertime we were really faced with some extreme heat conditions and helped our office, the county judge's office, make those difficult decisions to opening up the cooling centers. When it was very cold just over a week ago, we made the decision to do warming centers. We monitor every storm, every disturbance. Commissioner Chesney, when it came to reverse alert and riptides and when it took the lives of our constituents, she was on the forefront. When I asked her to help modernize MetroCom, she was above and beyond the call of duty. For all of these reasons, I not only am thrilled to announce her as employee in politics, I concur. So Kathy, please come forward with Melissa. I'm looking for you. I don't, are they not in the room? Oh, my goodness. Okay. So what we'll do is.
Bring them back later.
We'll bring her back later, but just know that for all those that are listening at home and listening throughout Nuasis County Courthouse, you are in great hands with Melissa Mungia and Kathy Ard Blantner at the helm in times of crisis. And it gives me great pleasure, and I'll look forward to our lunch together. So, thank you. We will bring her back for her certificate. Let's proceed to board appointments. We have several commissioners, and I will ask you to refer to your packets. The first I'm going to bring forward, Tyner, if you'd help me kind of get everything organized. We've got Nuasis Center for Mental Health and Intellectual Disabilities, MHID. That's going to appear as H1 in your folder. And Tyner, will you announce the applicants that we have?
Yes, there was a resignation letter from David Schroll. There's been four applicants. Mark Shower, LJ Francis, Buddy Ewing, and Osbert Blow.
Thank you.
I'd like to nominate Dr. Blow.
Second.
I've got a motion for Dr. Blow and a second. And since there's only one, I have to call the question. All those, one opening. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign. Can you tell me if I am correct in that there will be another opening for this position very soon, Tyner? Tell me who, remind me.
Well, this particular seat expires April, but I'll double-check that and let the court know.
Well, I'm gonna, I'm going to share a little news. I'm almost 100% certain. What happened is, is that when we nominated and accepted, and she accepted the position, Pamela Brower resigned from MHID. And so I wanted to let the other applicants know that immediately I will be posting, I'll be asking court administration to post another opening for this board, and I would highly encourage these applicants who have showed their interest to public service to reapply. So this position, Tyner, is it possible that we could maybe appoint in the latter part of December?
Yes. If the court asks me to post that, we can post it right away.
I believe that's the direction. Commissioners, is there any discussion? Do you believe that that's also the direction? Any thoughts there? Okay. I think that would be a good call there.
Okay.
So, Dr. Blow, I know you're here in the background and want to thank you for your service to this board, and I know you will, I know the commitment to behavioral health in general is tremendous from the system that you serve, and I think you can provide a great bit of insight and collaborative efforts, so, thank you. Thank you. Okay, as the next one, we have the Christus Spawn Board of Trustees, and that's H2.
Judge, here you have incumbent Govan. Nadkarney's term will expire December 2019. He submitted a letter of interest, and you also have three applicants, Sinia Montoya, LJ Francis, including Govan.
Judge, I'd nominate Govan Nadkarney for reappointment.
I have a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign. And I'm going to reissue the call. I think there might be an opening as well, and I'll be looking, I'll visit with you from court administration. So, again, pleased to have Govan continue his service there. The next one we have is the Nuasis County Child Welfare Board. I'm so sorry, I skipped one. The Beach Management Advisory Committee is number three.
Here, Judge, you have five seats that expire December 2019. You have four incumbents, Tara Galospy, Gabrielle Hipold, Cindy Easter, and Frederick Dotz have submitted letters of interest.
Judge, I would move reappointment, and then we'll have to, I'm working on that last seat.
Okay, so you move reappointment for the four incumbents?
Yes, ma'am.
Do I have a second? I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Oppose, same sign. That's a very good and important committee, the Beach Management Advisory Committee. Next, we have Nuasis County Child Welfare Board.
Judge, here you have three seats that will expire December 2019. Incumbents Susan O'Connell, Annette Duval, and Sandra Daywood have submitted letters of interest. You have new applicants LJ Francis and Lauren Rabe, who have submitted applications as well.
How many seats, Tyner?
Three.
And the three incumbents?
And the three incumbents have submitted letters.
You know, I just want to bring this up and up. I went through all of them, you know, and this is why I think we probably need to have a workshop on term limits, you know, that we're supposed to have because some of the members here have been there 18 years, 17 years. Not that it's wrong, I'm saying nothing is wrong, but I'm just saying, you know, that we talked about this, and this is why we were going to do things as far as go back and try to do term limits of three years, four terms, or four years, three terms. I don't know. But I think it's important that we actually set up a workshop and see which way we're going with this because we kept talking about it, and then we kept doing the same things.
That's a good point. I thought we did it. Did we not pass a policy?
You did, but, and I need to double-check that, but if this is a statutory appointment, which I believe it may be, then that order would not apply to this particular board.
Is this a statutory one? Maybe we should just, well, because we did pass a policy.
We have time. Do you want to pass on this and let us double-check that?
I just don't want to violate something we've already passed. I mean, I have no issue with any of these appointments.
I don't either.
I know you don't, so.
You know, we decided to do one thing and vote on it, we need to stay with it, but...
Yeah, we've already passed it. It's just a matter of whether, because this is where we have to go back and put on our legislative agenda for all the statutory ones for the next session, but if this is not a stat-
I listed all of them, and really, there's a lot of them, and all of them have somebody over 12 years.
Right. No, no.
So can I have a motion then, maybe, to table to our December 4th?
December 4th.
December 4th. It's just a few weeks away. And if you're an applicant in the room, please just give us a chance to review the process. I know that it would be beneficial to the board, and of course, that's what the highest calling is, is to the board that we serve. the highest calling is, is to the board that we serve. So let us do that and get back with you. I'm going to have Margaret reach out to all these members to explain our action today so they won't get overly concerned-
Yeah.
-that it had anything to do with them, but rather just a review of our own processes that, that we instituted-
We want to do something that violates our own policy.
Correct.
That's all we're making sure of, and that's, we'll make that clear.
Well, and what would be nice is when they come back for any appointments, that we would know then if they're statutory.
Yeah, that may be where Court Administration has to help us out a little bit and tell us-
I'm sorry I didn't-
No, no, no.
-do that ahead of time.
It's a new policy. We just did it, and we're still getting used to it. Just, I think Carolyn makes a good point there. Yep. Okay.
As I said, two weeks-
Good point, Commissioner.
-we can bring it back on December 4th. So, do we have a vote on that?
To table?
I need a motion and a second.
We have a motion.
I've got a motion and a second, and that is to table to the 4th. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Now we'll have the Nuaces County Appraisal District. That's under item five.
I did provide an advisory. I, I, I sent it to you guys.
Yeah, I think we have to table this one too, I think. It seems like, right? I mean, we don't, there's a question on whether we have any qualified applicant, and I think there was a mess up there too. I thought the person who was on there was going to reapply.
We table this one too.
Yeah.
Based on the opinion of the county attorney.
Second.
Okay. The motion is to table in order to receive and review counsel from the county attorney and all those, and so we will be tabling to December 4th, Tyner, on this as well. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. Now we have number, item number six, which is the Port of Corpus Christi Authority of Nuaces County. And if you're wondering, didn't we just do this one? This is, this was an unexpired right term, and so that is why you see this back on our agenda. This term expires December 2019. And Tyner, what do we have?
You have incumbent Catherine Tobin-Hillyard sent a letter of interest. There were no other applicants.
Motion to re-point.
I've got a motion and a second from Gonzalez, and all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Ms. Hillyard's in the audience, and I always like to recognize our public servants and think you're doing a terrific job, and really do appreciate you taking the time to come here today to, to let us know how much it means to you. So, thank you. All right. We also have the Nuaces County Civil Service Commission. That's number seven in your book.
Judge, I think we also had a-
Table that one.
Yeah.
I believe it has the same-
Right. Second on the table.
So, again, just for the clerk, we've got a motion and a second to table number seven to receive legal advice from the county attorney. We will bring it back on December 4th for action. Number eight is the Regional Health Awareness Board.
And it's my understanding you did not receive a letter of interest from the incumbent Dr. Shannon Dioga. So there were no applicants.
And-
Motion to repost this one. Table it and repost it.
Thank you.
We got two openings, right?
That, that's correct.
We need to work on that a little bit.
Yes.
Everybody here, up here needs to kind of think about that one because we need to get that filled.
Okay. But, so the, let's go ahead and get the motion then.
I would say till, is December 4th our last meeting?
No.
December 18th is the last meeting.
Let's table it to December 18th to allow some time to-
I agree. So we have a motion and a second, and all those in favor of mo, of tabling to December 18th to try to recruit applicants.
And we'll go ahead and post that today.
And Tyner, you, when we table these, first date specific, I guess we're counting on you to make sure they get back on the, right?
Yes, I'm making notes.
Okay, all right.
And, and also, I just want to point out that, is Annette still here? Annette, the Regional Health Awareness Board is, will you come just, is that okay? Could she provide a little background? Because when you're recruiting people, it would be nice to make certain that you understand it's, but we had been, we had had some discussion about whether or not there was a viability for the regional health awareness, and the city kind of gave you some talking points on that. Is that, is there something you could share? And if not, I understand, but-
Well, the Regional Health Awareness Board is comprised of the county, the city, as well as San Patricio County. And it was established by the, the city really wanted to establish it as a way to be a liaison between environmental issues and the public versus the public going directly to an EPA or TCEQ agency. And so that's why it was established.
They've worked on things like air quality, and they've worked on March, I mean, birth defects, and they've worked on, I even think lead in water. They've, they've had these types of issues. Is that correct?
They put out public service announcements, they've worked on super funds, the Ballard pit, so a lot of different areas. I think right now because we have a new city manager who actually wants to review all of the boards that the city does have, it's one of the many boards that's actually being reviewed as well, just to make sure that, you know, the efficiencies are still there and that the board needs, you know, to be continued.
I just want to mention that, Commissioners, in case December 18th comes, and, you know, we may need to have a dialogue with our city partners in this to really see whether or not we want to recruit, if they're already thinking about consolidating into boards that already exist, or, you know, ways that we can, as you said, be more efficient. All I'm saying is I want to put you on notice that December 18th-
Okay.
-may not be the drop dead date, but let's bring it back for tabling at that time. And we'll make sure that, if you can get me some information on where the city's headed, that could help us in our decision-making as well.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Edward, thank you. I'm going to move on to public comment at this time. I'm sorry, there was a vote, that's correct.
On seven and eight.
On seven and eight. I thought we voted on, we didn't vote on regional health awareness? Okay. All those in favor signify by saying aye on number eight. That's the table to December 18th.
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. And, and then on the Civil Service Commission, that table also needs to be reaffirmed for, with a vote. All those in favor of tabling to December the 4th?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye. Aye. Okay. The ayes have it. Thank you. I've got-
Judge, I understand Kathy and Melissa are here now, if you want to-
They are? Okay, great. Let's do that, let's pause for that, so that way we can stick to the agenda. Well, in your absence, we said beautiful things about you. Kathy, it bears noting that you were nominated along with some outstanding employees from a variety of departments countywide by your department head, Melissa Mungia. But I have to concur with absolutely every word. We discussed how you have really stepped up. Melissa had an absence that was a beautiful absence because it gave birth to a beautiful baby girl. But in her stead, you really came on as a new employee just shortly before her absence. And not only did you have to take strong leadership roles in MetroCom and cooling centers and warming centers and riptides, reverse alerts, emergency management drills with the state of Texas, and the list goes on and on, but you did so with such a professionalism that we couldn't even believe that you had only been with us for a few short months. And that really is the testament to giving us the confidence that we need countywide that in times of crisis, we have the right people in the right place. And so for all of these reasons, I'd like to read to you that you are November's 2019 Employee of the Month as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator. We give you this small token of our appreciation and recognition of your outstanding performance, productivity, and dedicated service. And I need to put my-
John Henry.
-pen on it, which I'll do. And I'd like to come down there, present it to you, take a picture if you would honor me, and let you know that we can't do it without you ladies. You make us feel strong and safe, and quite frankly, I am excited about what, how we are going to expand the way we treat our county's emergency services, not only with some of the nuances that we've talked about with the Nuaces Countywide Fire Marshal, but updating our hazard mitigation plan, and quite frankly, getting our fair share of the resiliency money. This is falling on your shoulders. When I tell other urban counties that we're doing all these things, they want to know how big my team is, and I say, "Well, we're too, but we are a powerful two." And so I really want to thank you for making me feel like I have an army behind me. And this is so well, well deserved. I look forward to the lunch, and I hope the parking space, it makes you happy for 30 days. Okay.
If not, you can have Brent's.
They sure did, didn't they? Okay. We're coming down. Thank you. You know what? I think, Tyner, if you'll come up here, we'll just move this out of the way.
Thanks. Yeah. Commissioner's office is on Terry's parking lot.
It says November instead of December.
Thank you so much.
Brent won't give you his, I'll give you mine.
Thank you. Melissa, we'd love for you to join us.
Oh, no, that's our client.
Melissa.
Oh, Melissa. Perfect timing on that.
Thank you. Thanks for nominating her.
Thank you. We'll get you a new one, but keep the old one too. Thank you.
Look at those shoes, Judge. Those pretty, she's got, those shoes, she's got, those are pretty cool.
I missed him, I missed him. Okay. Now we turn to, I'm losing my touch with all these forgetful things. But, I know, but we're good now on everything else. Okay, good. We've got public comments this morning, and the first is Lisa Buckholz. And I'll just remind everybody that this is a time where people get to come and approach the dais and make comments, and unfortunately, the law doesn't, not give us an opportunity to, to speak back unless we also sign up for public comment. So welcome, Lisa. If you wouldn't mind, for the record, state your name and address.
Lisa Buckholz. My address is 1411 East Farm Road, 1717, and I live in Kingsville, Texas. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have been volunteering at Nuaces County Animal Control for about five years now, and I have been serving on the Nuaces County Animal Control Advisory Board for a little bit over a year now. And throughout this time, I have been very, very impressed with the staff's care and concern for the welfare of the animals in their stead. However, as times change, so does the need for reexamining and redefining municipal services in accordance with public perception, as well as with the needs and the wants of a community. So I really would like to take an opportunity to commend Supervisor Ramirez and Nuaces County Commissioners and the county judge for taking a very, what I feel is a proactive approach to moving away from an animal control mentality and more towards an animal management and welfare mantra. And towards that end, and as requested by Nuaces County Commissioners, Commissioners' Court, the county judge, our advisory board members have discussed at a few of our meetings and also have submitted several suggestions for a name change in order to help to rebrand this department. Whatever name the Commissioners' Court decides upon will be a giant step forward, but I just want to take this opportunity to urge the court to try and select a name that will emphasize the mission's shift by incorporating the word "care" in the title, such as perhaps Nuaces County Animal Care Services, and possibly a small tagline underneath, "Care hyphen Control hyphen Adoptions." Prominently featuring the word "care" in the title sends a very clear message, not only to the staff, but also to the general public, that the days of simply operating as a dog pound are over. And I want to really and genuinely say thank all of you very, very much for an opportunity over these last few years, and especially right now, today, in the present, for being part of what I see are some really exciting changes happening at this particular department within the county. Thank you all very much.
Thank you. The next person is Henry Williams. And Henry, I don't know what's wrong with me today. I, I woke up way before the sun, way, way before the sun. I felt so good and so clear, and all I've done is forget to take a few votes, and I called you by your wrong name, and I've known you forever. Will you please forgive me this morning? I, I'm, I've signed up, Laura, just so you know, on the protocol, but I, I used your wrong name, and, and I just want to ask your forgiveness. Our name is the thing that belongs to us the most, and I'm sorry that I, I called you wrong when you were so gracious to give prayer this morning.
Judge, no need to apologize. You know, we, and there's no need for forgiveness, you know, because we, you know, we honor you, we know that you're very busy, and, you know, it's just a, it's a great honor for, for us, you know, to stand before the county commissioners. What I would like to do is refer back to the county commissioners meeting on November 6th, item 12, which had to do with comments that Port Commissioner Dick Bowers made. And what we have done since, on November 11th, we met with Port Commissioner Dick Bowers and also Port Commissioners Lynn Squires. At our meeting on November 11th of the Hillcrest Residents Association, the meeting was a, a good meeting, and the meeting was a healing meeting. And Mr. Bowers spoke, and Lynn Squires spoke, and the residents spoke. And we, it was a, a good time of, of speaking to each other, a good time of, of bringing healing to those comments and bringing about good relationship. And we're going to be meeting with the Port Commissioners on a regular basis, that is, to keep our relationship one of benefit to all involved. And we also meet on a regular basis with City, City Manager Zanoni, and we're going to be meeting regularly with him also. We would also like to invite you all, yourself, county judge, and the county commissioners, to also begin, to begin meeting with us as a neighborhood, so that we can come together in unity and in oneness, you know, for the good of our community and for the good of the neighborhood, and let this be a standing invitation to you all. Our meetings take place normally Monday evenings at 6:00 p.m. at Brooks Chapel AME Church, of which Pastor Adam Carrington is pastor there. And we would like to also invite you all to attend those meetings, you know, as a statement of unity and encouragement.
Thank you so much. I'm going to sign you up, John.
Yes, please. Direct our, our, direct Tyner, I guess, if he can make sure that we get those meetings posted, if he just posts them on a regular basis so that we can go and show up, because I'd hate for three or four of us to show up one week because it's an important item, you know, more than, than our regular general discussions.
Yes.
And if only, you know, only two of us can participate, so I, I think if we can make that a regular thing, or at least if we can give him advance notice, then we'd like to be there so we can get it posted, so we can be there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I did sign your name up, John, and, and I also put mine for invocation slash port. And so I just wanted to comment how much I appreciate just the idea of follow-up. So often, we have items that are brought to us, and then you don't know the rest of the story. And that was an opportunity to hear from Mr. Williams the rest of the story, and it's a testament to communication, how important it is to be able to talk to one another. And when we talk, we can often resolve our differences, despite the fact that we could have been completely opposite when we entered the room. We can leave in a very different mindset and, and frame. And so I would like to attend, and I know that there are things that this commission can address in the Hillcrest community, and so we look forward to that conversation. But thank you for bringing us the story after we, we heard those comments, because otherwise we would not have known. So, we're grateful. Thank you. Thank you. I have no other public comment, but I would like to inquire as to whether there any, there is anybody in the audience who's not had the opportunity to sign up, and if so, this would be the time to do so. Hearing none, I'm going to close public comment and move on to our consent agenda this morning. Yes?
Would you like to recognize Dr. Shaker's here?
Yes, of course, and we can, we can advance, actually.
No, no, would you like to recognize that he's here?
Oh, okay. And he's here for two items.
Yes.
Okay, let's do 4A2 right now, and then he can discuss his, um, his item that's on the agenda regarding the technician, and then we'll move back. And I appreciate the...
It's 4A10.
Well, the presentation he's involved with is Southwest Transplant Alliance.
I don't think he's involved.
Well, he's, he's...
He's here for that, too.
No, he's here for that, too. We spoke with him yesterday.
Just to hear it out.
Is there anyone else for that agenda item?
This whole crew.
Okay, okay, great. Well, then, sorry we took you out of order, but it'll get you back to where you're supposed to be a lot quicker.
See, if you show up with a medical examiner, you have pull.
It works, it works.
That's the lesson of the day.
So, so, welcome.
Thank you, good morning.
Good morning.
Truly an honor to be here today with Commissioners Court and with the community here behind us. I'm Sandy Lemmons, the Chief Operating Officer for Southwest Transplant Alliance, and with me, I have Damian Jackson, who is our newly appointed medical examiner and JP liaison, and he'll be presenting with me as well this morning. And thank you, Dr. Shaker, for being here, very important. I'd like to talk just a little bit about, who will advance slides? Tyner, you've got that, okay, great, thank you. I'd like to talk a little bit just about organ and eye and tissue transplantation in general, just to give a little brief overview. Here in the U.S., organ and tissue donation is part and governed by the federally-run United Network for Organ Sharing and the FDA. There are 58 OPOs across the United States, each with a very specific designated service area. Here in the great state of Texas, we have three OPOs. There is one centrally located out of Houston, that would be Life Gift. There is another in San Antonio called the Texas Organ Sharing Alliance, and then there's us here in Dallas called Southwest Transplant Alliance. What I'd like to start with is just a brief overview of the three components of donation. The very first step in the process is hospital, is our hospital development process, and where we really focus time and attention on partnering with our hospitals and doing both education, so educating all of our clinical staff on the importance of donation, as well as the process of donation, and also being on site to have early interactions with our families, who are really facing one of the most challenging and devastating moments in their lives. The second step is working with our donor families, and we take a great deal of pride and care and compassion to spend time alongside our donor families as they walk through the grief process. As you can imagine, it is a very challenging situation to find out that your loved one won't be coming home with you. We like to say it's the place where grief and hope come together, probably one of the only spaces where grief and hope come together. The third step in the process is what we call our clinical service department, and that is really where, when the hospital has determined that brain death has occurred, meaning the brain is no longer functioning, and the patient is only being sustained through life support. At that point, the patient is discharged from the hospital and actually placed in the care of Southwest Transplant Alliance. It is at that time that we really begin our clinical services and our donor management, where we're taking care of that donor and all of the, protecting all of the options for organ, eye, and tissue donation. And these three steps are really what makes up the donation process. I'd like to share just, I think we all know the importance of all types of organ donation, but many of you may not know that one donor can save up to eight lives. And for tissue donors, they can help heal and provide life sustainment for more than 75 people for one donation. So, very, very much a life-changing situation there. Donation itself, only three in every 1,000 deaths have the potential to be an organ donor. So, as you can imagine, the pool is very, very small. So, when we do find an opportunity for donation, it's our jobs to really protect that and to provide that option for the family, because again, only three in 1,000 can be a donor. The types of donation that can occur, do you want to advance? Can occur, so types of organ donation, we can recover heart and lungs and liver, kidneys, intestine and pancreas, and on the tissue side, cornea, tendons, valves, veins, skin and bones. So, many, many options for healing and saving lives. I'd like to now kind of transition to all the great work that's being done here in Corpus Christi and in Nuasis County. The next, the slide you see here is really a sample of what we can provide on a monthly or quarterly basis, and it really talks about, by hospital, the number of organ donors that have occurred in this year for 2019, as well as the lives saved. So, you can see the impact, over 405 lives have been touched by organ donation in this great, great county. And the ME release donors, those, the numbers there at 113 are those cases that actually have met the criteria and been referred to the medical examiner in their office. A bit of history, looking back from 2014 to 2019, what you'll see here is that we've had a very consistent number of organ donors throughout the past five-plus years, and we've been able to grow the number of organs that we've recovered, but we still have a lot of room for growth as we continue to look forward. And I'd like to share just a little bit about tissue donation. We've started recovering tissue about two years ago, and here, again, in our counties, we have completed 36 tissue donors in 2018 and 49 for this year, so we're really happy with the increase there. And you can see the breakdown just of all the different medical systems that we've recovered Another big celebration for this community is Driscoll Children's Hospital. They're a great partner for us, and they're a transplant center here in your own community. The importance of pediatric donation is that, as you can imagine, pediatric recipients can only receive pediatric organs due to size and weight and scale. So, although it is not something we like to think about, and we certainly, it breaks our heart to have young lives lost, there are many, many pediatric recipients who are awaiting a lifesaving gift. 2018 was a big year for Driscolls in that they celebrated the 100th kidney transplant, so that last year was a really big year of celebration. So, why are we even here today, talking and presenting to the court and to the community? We want to share that we appreciate the support of the Commissioners Court here and of all the community. It's so important, the organ shortage continues to rise, as you can see the graph displayed. As the gap continues to increase, although we're able to do more and more organ donations each year, we can't catch up with the needs, so the demand is greater than the supply, and we need all of your help in order to make this a priority for education and awareness and support. The Donate Life Texas Register Registry has grown as well. It's the fastest-growing registry in the U.S., so we're really proud, as Texans, to be increasing those registered year over year. In 2017, just two years ago, we hit our 10 million mark. That was a big celebration. Overall, there's about 45% of all Texans are registered for organ donation, and although we're really proud of that number, we have a long way to go. One of the states with the highest donation registration rate is Montana, and they're at 93%. So, we're chasing them. We want to get, we want to get up there into the 90s as well. This slide really here just shows that we've increased, again, the total increase in organ donors up to 47%, as we look at the past six years or so, with a 503% increase in registered organ donors. So, again, lots of effort that we're putting into increasing the registry. With that, I will kindly turn it over to Damian, and he'll share the last few slides.
Good morning, and thank you.
Good morning.
The truth about organ donation, we want to share with you. We've kind of recapped with, uh, anyone can sign up to be an organ donor with regard to race, age, ethnicity, medical history. A lot of times, we try to assume how healthy someone is. The individual's donation status, contrary to popular beliefs, does not hinge on whether you're a donor or not. We'd like to emphasize that, because some people think that we are more vested in someone's care when they are a donor, but the hospital is taking care, like Sandy mentioned earlier. Organ eye and tissue donation does not, does not become an option until that declaration is made, and that is heavily documented. Based on our statistics, all major religions support organ eye and tissue donation, and we've gotten reports that, from clergy, that it is left up to the individual as a personal choice. There's no cost to the donor family once we take over care of the specific donor, and... Oh, sorry. An open, open casket viewing is possible with organ eye tissue donation, in addition to autopsy. That does not preclude that. We start taking care of the family before we know what our decision is going to be for organ donation, so we partner with our hospitals. And from what I've heard here today, we've spoken to relationship in multiple, multiple instances, in multiple ways throughout Nuasis County, and our presence here today is to let you know that we are a part of Nuasis County. We have an office located here as well. I think that's important, because letting people know that they matter, right? Being able to speak to what goes on in your locale is important. There's also living donor programs, which is another presentation that we could provide, but being able to save lives in donating kidneys is very important. Then you have liver, intestine and pancreas in addition to that, but kidney is the largest So, in our Dallas office, we are planning for the expansion, if you will, so that most of our donation activity can occur locally. Going, going to that model, we're looking at being able to provide a higher level of care. Just had a mind blank. That's all right. So, the role in donation with our partnership here with our medical examiners and JPs is, like I said before, is relationship. What's important to me is that we are providing information and documentation that is input into the final autopsy report. So, that's important, to know that it is a partnership, collaboration. It's important to know that we don't know what we don't know. So, the best way to have conversations is to have them early, so that interaction can happen all along the way, not just when there is a problem that arises. I think that's important, because, like I said, the sentiment that I feel here today is conversation, some table, let's get some more information, and let's come back to it. That's important for this process as well, and like Sandy mentioned, this is one of the most difficult times in a family's life, so why would we not want to facilitate and make that a more smooth process? So, part of that review and collaboration speaks to multiple facets with how we collect the information, how we provide the information, that's where the collaboration comes into play. So, what we're seeking to do is develop and maintain relationships, so that makes them rich, so, um, sorry. So, being able to provide data is important, so that you know what your impact is, you know what your footprint is, and providing follow-up and requests for information. We have a quality department that supports that initiative as well, and then establishing protocols. If we can do process improvement, that will improve the relationship, so that we're learning from mistakes along the way, so I think that's important. I appreciate your time, and thank you for inviting us to present.
Thank you, thank you. And since Dr. Shaker is here, I'm just going to invite you to come up, and you and I had an opportunity to speak briefly yesterday about this matter, but it is important, the collaboration that your office has with, with the Southwest Transplant Alliance, isn't it? And it's something that you would encourage us to, to continue.
Yes.
And it's evident from the 405 lives that we've saved, and I'm very mindful that our relationship in Nuasis County with Krista Spahn, Krista Spahn and its affiliates were responsible for over three-quarters of those 400 lives. Very proud of that. I wish Dr. Blow had been able to see that. I'm certain he knows, given that he was the chief of trauma before he became the CEO, but, but still, it bears noting for the record that our partnership, that who, NCDC, and, I'm sorry, not NCDC, but the Nuasis County Hospital District, you know, works with, is really part and parcel of these lives saved, so it's great. I want to thank you, Dr. Shaker, because Commissioners, he came to me yesterday and thought it was so important, he made time out of his day to be a part of today's conversation, so...
Thank you so much for having me.
Thank you, Doctor. Thank you. Thank you so much.
If it pleases the court, we do have handouts, if you'd like us to leave any back.
I think it would be helpful. Why don't you leave him with the court administrator, the court manager?
Yeah, a couple of...
Thank you.
Dr. Shaker, thank you very much. Appreciate you and your staff being here, and hopefully our relationship with this donor will be better than what it is now, greater. It's something that's needed. You know, when they came to my office, I said, if you got a donor's card, you can come in, you know, because I have a donor's card, you know, and so does my wife. So, but you can't have them yet until I leave, right? But, but anyway, but I think that it's a good thing to be a donor, because, you know, you continue to, I always say that you continue to live in somebody else's life, right? So, although you won't be here, but...
You'll leave a legacy.
Yes, right, you'll leave a legacy. So, I want to thank you all for what you're doing, and hopefully we can get more people to be donors and, you know, and be ready, you know, and your family needs to be ready, so, so I know my daughters are, you know, we talked about it with my daughters and all that, so. So, you know, it's a process, you know, and I thank you for, because I know for you, it's really hard, and it's a passion when you deal with these families, so, but I thank you, and Dr. Shaker, and I hope that in the future, we'll continue to work with this foundation.
Thank you, sir. And Dr. Shaker, if you'd stay at the dais for us, we have another item that we're going to take, and then that way allow you to go back to the work that you do, and that's item number 10. But the last Commissioners item was for presentation only, no action needs to be taken, other than good conversation and continuing to, I'll echo what Commissioner Jaggs said, very often, what I've seen is families, as an attorney, families struggle with the decision that their loved ones have made. In other words, the loved ones did their job, and then the family has a hard time accepting it and adhering to that. But we can solve those problems when we let our loved ones know that these are really our wishes, and so I think that's really incumbent upon all of us. If you really want your wishes to be followed, you have to be strong enough to have those conversations. And so, anyway, item number 10 is where we're going to proceed, and then I promise we'll go back in regular order. Tyner, this was a discussion and a consideration of adding an additional regular full-time senior autopsy technician position. It's pay group 18. I'm going to ask Julie Guerra from HR to come up, along with Dr. Shaker, pay group number 18, Department 3890, which is the medical examiner. I want to preface this by saying that I, myself, asked for this to be on the agenda after serious contemplation and discussion with Dr. Shaker, the auditor's office, as well as HR. Typically, as all of you know, we are very strict around here about making sure that our budget stays as balanced as possible. However, we also must be, learn how to be flexible and how to be nimble when the situation arises that we must address that's in the benefit of our constituents, and that's what brings us here today. And Dr. Shaker, if you would just briefly tell the Commissioners why you believe this autopsy technician is needed at this time? It's always a difficult subject matter to speak of death, but, but I think that it's also incumbent to acknowledge the services that you provide and that if you are under-resourced, so please let us know what's going on.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
And thank you for having me today. In fact, our office serves the citizen of Nuasis County, and also we extend our services to neighboring counties of approximately...
It's always a difficult subject matter to speak of death, but, but I think that it's also incumbent to acknowledge the services that, that you provide and, and that if, if you are under-resourced. So, please let us know what's going on.
Good morning, Judge. Good morning to the Commissioners. And thank you for having me today. In fact, our office serves the citizen of Nuances County and also we extend our services to neighboring counties of approximately 17 counties. And the number of cases of deaths, they are increasing, they are not decreasing. So, we handle over 900 cases less.
900?
900. And according to the rules and regulations set up by the National Association of Medical Examiners and College of American Pathologists, we should have at least four pathologists and four technicians. And otherwise, our office will not be accredited nationally. So, this is, and indeed, to run this office smoothly and effectively for the benefits of the citizen of Nuances County. And graciously enough, you and the Commissioners allowed me to have this opportunity to serve.
Yes, thank you. And Julie, from an HR perspective, we are trying to address these needs, and I know the Commission is aware of some of the needs that, that have already come about with the impending retirement of Dr. Fernandez, but why don't you go ahead and make comments on, on this particular position?
This position is, what we're planning, what I'm planning to do is transfer temporary salaries. They have several temporary employees that work for them on a part-time basis, and a lot of them are becoming regular part-time workers because of, of their great need of employees over there. And so, what I want to do is take temporary salaries and transfer them to a regular salary line item, and so there shouldn't be any additional fiscal impact to that department for salaries. We're just gonna transfer that money, and then we'll be able to bring on a full-time employee.
And Dale, does this also meet with your, do you have a concern or do you...
Well, the, the temporary employees that we're talking about is their investigators. We had to set the investigators up as temporary employees because of the way we were audited by the IRS. Before, we were kind of considered them as contract employees under a different expense code. But the IRS said because we have investigators in another office that would pay through payroll, we had to keep them now as part of our payroll. So, we still need the investigators, I still need a temporary salary.
Okay. So, so we will need to have a, a change order then?
Probably, yes.
Okay. Okay, but you'll work with Julie then on that distinction?
Yes.
Okay.
Is there an increase in funding or not? We're gonna move...
It looks like there will be.
Probably will be, yes.
Okay. And how are we gonna, and how would we do that?
Well, we, we know that there's gonna be a, there was a, a, a change in some of the office and some of the staff might have changed. I know one of the, the employees there has recently retired, so that position now goes to a lower pay group if that's so approved. So, that is a little bit of savings there, and we're just gonna continue looking there. We have a contingency fund that has availability to cover some of these abnormal cases that we have. So, we have enough money to cover that at, at the moment, yes.
So, when it says fiscal impact, $0 for salaries, is that accurate then?
Well, at the moment, I believe not because they're, they're wanting to move the entire temporary salary to cover this increase, but I don't believe we can because the investigators are not officially employees of the county, but the way the IRS audited us, they are now required to be temporary employees, those are on-call investigators.
I, I, I don't doubt that we need this position, so we've got to figure out how to do it.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not, I just am asking the question because I want to know, but we've got to do this.
Could you definitely give us a memo to, to Tyner so we can understand the fiscal impact? But Julie, pay grade 18, if, if, if your memory serves you correctly, and let's pretend we had no offsets at all, a pay grade 18 for a year would be a salary of approximately...
$35,000.
Correct.
And we currently have other, another senior autopsy technician in place, so it's just creating an additional position. So, that's why that salary is already set by what we currently have in existence.
Well, let's try to do all the offsets we can, but I mean, we've, we've got to figure this one out, in my opinion.
So, let's have a motion that, you know, moves to approve with, obviously, just the consideration, Dale, that you'll let, let us all be aware of the fiscal impact, but it will be no greater than $35,000 a year. We hope that there are some offsets, but...
There is a little bit of an incurious because of the benefit side of it, so the...
I'm sorry, 35 plus 20%.
$42,000.
Right. 35 is the base salary and then 20% is the benefits.
I'll move.
Okay, I've got a motion, and I'll, I'll, okay, thank you, Commissioner Modis. I've got a second. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Well, we're, we're sorry that, that increased, you know, increased deaths in our community bring us to this moment, but we are a growing population, and this is not uncommon in metropolitan communities that are in the process of growth besides... I just want to make sure everyone knows, you handle a region of how many other counties?
17 counties.
17 other counties that our medical examiners is taking care of. So, it's just important to note that it's not just our growth, it's the growth of our region.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate you. Thank you, Doctor.
Thank you, Doctor.
Okay. Bringing us back into regular order was, would be the consent agenda, and today we have items A through U, not quite the whole alphabet, but we were working up to it. A through U, and I'd ask you to look over them briefly and would seek a motion, but first I'd like to hear if there are any that need to be removed. Tyner's got one.
Yeah, Judge Michael would like to talk about item F.
F?
As in Frank.
All right, we'll move that one.
And I believe the county attorney has one comment about L.
Judge, I would move to pass the remaining items, A through U, except for...
I've got one more coming. Sorry, just hang one with me, and I've got K is being pulled.
K, F, and L so far. That would be my motion.
All right. Does anybody have anything else? Okay. Hearing not...
I want one more.
N. I'm sorry, N. N. Got it?
Motion would be to pass the remaining ones besides F, K, L, and N.
And I'll look for a second.
Second.
Thank you.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Let's take them in alpha order. I've got F.
Good morning, Judge and Commissioner.
Michael, good morning.
On item F, I need to hand out some replacement pages that we worked out with the county attorney's office on the actual agreement document, just to make sure that we properly documented what's going on on this item.
Is there anything of substance we need to, is there substantive changes?
No, it's, it's basically an increase in CPI and so that's, it's just an amendment.
Okay.
Yeah, this amendment includes...
CPI?
The CPI increase along with noting the timely notification of Gulf Coast Paper to renew. With the redetermined pricing, the change in total annual estimated cost is increasing by $2,000 with the net of the increases and the decreases, which is a 1.7% difference from the previous year's contract.
I've got a motion to accept this amendment.
Second.
I've got a second. The only discussion I have, so what was the CPI that was used? It's okay, it's on the chart here. I see it.
Yeah. Yeah. It's attached, but also there were some other mitigating factors. Gulf Coast Paper, who's been our provider, was receiving papers from Georgia Pacific, who had a plant shutdown, and so they had to find another source, which was Ascendant, and they had some price changes on copy paper that increased from 7% to 9%. And so, we got that net impact of the 2% change.
Mike, it's okay, we don't have...
It's 2,000 for the whole year, guys. It's not, it's not, it's not a per month.
Right, I'm not gonna balk too much, but in general, CPI has nothing to do with your commodity, with your market changing. We need to look at our contracts. We shouldn't, because your products change, your supply chain changes, should not affect the consumer if you've come into a contract. I'll be very honest, but in this case, we need to make sure that the best supplier, I think, is Gulf Coast Paper, so I want to work with them, but I, I'm not sure I, I understand the philosophy, but...
So, the philosophy really is centered, not as much around CPI, is centered around the change in the...
Yeah, and their supply chain.
Where they're...
But, but, but a consumer should not have to bear that.
And that was, that was part of the, our IFB.
In the IFB original language, they have an opportunity each other to...
Boy.
And, and y'all should know that this used to be done every six months, and I came into the purchasing office, we shortly changed that to where we're only looking at this on an annual basis versus every six months, because the market experiences a change every six months.
Okay. Okay.
And the market change is usually like 5%, so 1.7 is not too bad.
Okay. All right. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, let's move on. The next one is, stay up with us, Michael, just in case. Oh, no, never mind, that's not yours. K was the next one.
I'll take that one, Judge.
Okay, go ahead. Who had a question on K, Commissioner?
I did.
Gonzalez?
I'm not really sure about the ratification application. What do we, I don't even...
What happened was, is the Nuances County Historical Commission, whenever they do the Voices of South Texas, they need parking, and in order to use the parking lot at Cole's, a form has to be filled out, a CCISD form. And I, I worked with the county attorney at the time, and the Historic Commission really didn't have the authority to sign that in their own right. So, we, and we received it too late to get it on a court agenda, so we had the, the judge go ahead and sign it, submit it to CCISD so the Historic Commission could use their parking lot. And just to clean things up, I put it on this agenda to ratify.
All right. I'll move.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. And now we have L.
Yes, Judge, this is, this is the one with Charlie San, who is representing that we received that letter.
Yes.
I just wanted to point out that under the statute, in approving the permit, you can also make a, agree to an indemnification agreement, and we had prepared one. And so, what we're saying is when you approve this, that you're in agreement with, with the indemnity agreement that we are attaching. Since they're gonna be trenching, obviously, we want to make sure that any claims of any sort will not, obviously, will, will be taken care of the county and they will be responsible for it.
That's great.
So, I, I, I want to make sure that you understand that the permit also includes the indemnification.
As long as they're involved in it.
Yeah. Right.
Right.
Do I have a motion then to approve? Got a motion?
Second.
And a second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, now I have N. That's, that's Lance, come on up, Lance. I think there was a question by Commissioner Gonzalez on the SHI.
You know what, Judge, I made a mistake.
You made a mistake? Sorry, Lance.
Never mind.
One not walk, my friend.
Move passage.
All those in favor, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
I don't know who the second was, Judge, sorry.
The, the motion...
I moved, did she, he said...
I think that there was a second here.
Okay, I just don't know.
Sorry. Okay, and that, I believe, does conclude the consent agenda. And now, we're going to move to item number A1. We're moving into the regular agenda, and Timothy, I see you, you're here. I also see Representatives from our insurance consultant, Chase Carlisle. We have a 2020 Nuances County Workman's Comp coverage provider, and we did receive quotes, and you're here to explain and tell us about them.
Good morning, once again. Yes, discuss and consider selection for our 2020 Nuances County Workman's Compensation provider, provider with law enforcement coverage. Before I let Chase come up here, went down and went, what if, what if this? And he answered pretty much all my questions that I had, so I'll let him explain. If you have any follow-up questions, by all means, on how we're gonna, this transition's gonna take place if... So, without further words, Chase?
Thank you.
Good morning. Like Timothy said, we did solicit quotes on behalf of the county this year as your, as your new broker. The two quotes that we did receive was from the incumbent, TAC, the Texas Association of Casualties, which the county's been with for a number of years. The second quote that we received was from Texas Mutual Insurance Company. Today, we're recommending Texas Mutual Insurance based on the price decrease that was shown between their pricing and tax. It's roughly $26,000 or 7%. Texas Mutual, just a little background, in case you're not familiar with them, they are the largest work comp carrier in Texas with over 70,000 policyholders. It's a mutual company, so it's owned by the policyholders, meaning that at the end of the year, if there's any surplus in profit, they do give that back to the policyholders in dividends. So, you know, we have some clients that are receiving anywhere between 10 upwards of 30% of the premium returned in dividends, which I, I think the county will see as they go forward and, and grow their relationship with Texas Mutual as well. You will not receive a dividend in the first year, but as you build your longevity with them and, and reputation and your claims remain in an adequate manner, then you do receive a dividend from them. Some of the questions that Timothy did present was whether or not, how they handled their claim basis and their platform. Their platform for reporting claims is pretty similar to what TAC provides now to Timothy. We went through that system as well. It allows him to still go online, review the adjuster's notes, see where the claim is, that kind of stuff. The other item that he did ask was how the current claims would be handled with the current carrier. Those claims will stay with TAC that are currently open right now, and they will handle those until they're finished out, and Texas Mutual will take on any new claims as of the new policy inception.
Okay. So, Timothy, were you able to get all the questions that you had and concerns addressed?
Yes, yes, ma'am, because the main primary, the primary question I had is, yes, we have open claims with TAC. Since we're not putting anything back into TAC, would they charge us for any of those open policies? And no, I was assured that was the price of doing business, so whatever claims we had with TAC will still fall under TAC, but we do not have to put money back into TAC.
Okay, great. Well, a $26,000 savings is quite evident that that, as I say, the thing speaks for itself, and because we're considering other purchases later this year, that offset could be tremendous. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I do, I have a comment.
Yes.
I have had them for over 25 years, Texas Mutual, with our company. They're absolutely wonderful, and you really do get dividends, so I'm, I'm glad to see we're changing.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great. That's wonderful news.
Judge, so I wanted to ask, so based on y'all's experience with other governmental entities at different levels, they can go through, say, like TML or, right, or Texas Association School Boards, what have you. Us, we have TAC now. I know it's separate than kind of the more, the part that we deal with more, it's legislative than it's still, it's part of the name, but it's, it's separate, I understand that. But have you seen this happen before? Is it just because Texas Mutual, they're, they were, because they're so large, are able to give, I guess, a better rate?
Yes, sir.
Because I would think that TAC, that we're, that we pay into, that we're a part of, would be able to give us a better overall rate.
And it, it goes different ways. So, you know, I'm not saying that next year that if we do this again, that, that TAC doesn't provide a better rate than, than Texas Mutual, it just kind of goes in ups and flows, but you know, just for example, the Port of Corpus Christi, they were with TML for years. They switched to Texas Mutual three years ago and have never looked back as well. So, I mean, it's, it's a great carrier, not that TAC wasn't, I mean, an excellent carrier as well. I think y'all have had an excellent relationship. This is just purely, purely kind of based on cost at this point.
Yes.
Helps pay for your new...
Plus the dividends that you could, could earn.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Well, is there a motion to, so, okay, and do I have a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, thank you, Chase.
Thanks.
Good job.
Thank you so much, Timothy, for asking the good questions. Number three, as you recall, we've already done two. Number three is to discuss and consider the approval of the Port of Corpus Christi Authority Funding Agreement. This is in regards to the contribution of the construction of the Observation Deck at Horace Caldwell Pier in Port Aransas, Texas. I'm imagining that this funding agreement is probably a county attorney...
Yes, I think the lawyers got together in, in order to memorialize
Do we?
the agreement between the parties. It's a fairly simple document, but I think the lawyers wanted it.
Do you consider this a type of interlocal, or is it really more just a funding, like just a contractual agreement, Luda?
I mean, it was called a funding agreement, but it is, it is like an interlocal.
Okay.
Between governments.
Is there anything, we've, I've had the opportunity to review it. It looks in order. Is there anything we should know?
Other than if you, you have to use that money for the purpose designated in that document, if not, you're going to have to pay them back.
Commissioner Chesney, have you had an opportunity to look at the scope and?
Yes, ma'am. Basically, as, I think as articulated, this was just the lawyers getting together to put on paper what the court has already voted for. We've already voted to accept it, but this was a ratification, I guess, and a new funding agreement
Okay.
put forth. And I think it does articulate what the agreement is between the parties.
Okay. So do I have a motion?
So moved, sorry.
A second? And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Judge Rosie's here, otherwise she wanted to say.
Oh.
But if she doesn't, that's okay, too.
I literally.
She's fine.
She was just here in case.
She's fine.
Thank you.
They were in favor, okay.
Thank you so much. Well, we're appreciative and excited about the technology and the curriculum that this particular Observation Deck can provide. And can't wait to work with Jeff Pollock and Sarah Garza and the rest of the environmental team. It's great. Thank, thank you. Number four is discuss and consider approving a commissioner's court order to grant the purchase, purchasing exemptions under 262024 of the Local Government Code, relationship, I'm sorry, in relation to professional services of engineers for the construction of an Observation Deck at Horace Caldwell Pier. And Tyner, I think you and I both probably can provide sufficient background. I'll let you bat first.
Yeah, this item goes along with the one following, four and five. And Maria can help us with this as well. But as you know, we have a very close deadline coming up on our project for the Observation Deck. And we got consent with U.S. Fish and Wildlife to take this approach. And so the county attorney helped us get this in order, acceptable to U.S. Fish and Wildlife to do this order for number four, approve that. And then that allows us to go to number five.
And just for the court.
Right, Maria.
Just for the court certification, part of the reason we're doing this is because Hanson was the original engineer on the project. They have the plans and specs, and we think this is the most efficient, cost-efficient way also going forward in regards to doing this. So just want to make sure people.
And in fact, Maria, our deadline is to produce 60% of the plans by January 1, 2020. And our goal is to see if Hanson can do some of that site adjustment. I mean, it's, it's not like you can just use the old plans. And I think we should make mention of that. Isn't that correct?
Yes. So just kind of as a reminder to the court, the court did authorize this, authorize the submission of the project proposal back on July 31st. That was submitted to U.S. Fish and Wildlife. We've now gotten a letter back from their agency allowing us to submit a grant adjustment, if you will, to build a like-type structure, again, what was built at Bob Hall Pier, moving, not moving it, but creating a structure at Horace Caldwell Pier. So we originally were told we had to go out for RFQ. There, we asked for an exception, basically, with U.S. Fish and Wildlife. So they are in a, in agreement with the way we will be procuring Hanson Engineering, if so selected in the next agenda item.
So the idea, just come on up, Michael. The idea generally is that we're going to be substantially using the same exact plans. But of course, anytime you change a site, you have to create the right structure for the, for that site, right? That no two places are identical, particularly on the coast. So that's going to be very important. But there's no doubt, isn't it true, Michael, that we're going to have a great savings by being able to use the same engineer and use the same substantially?
Definitely, definitely provide some economy in that way. I just wanted to add that I've also spoken with Laura on this, and we've identified through the Purchasing Act, this, this item that's called out here, the 262024, which allows for this exemption for professional services such as engineers.
That's great. Well, I'm satisfied. I, we spent a lot of time on this, on this particular issue to get everything in order. I don't know if there's anybody here representing Hanson. Yes. Hello, Willie, right there in front of me.
Judge, I would move passage of items four and five.
All those, actually, I need a second, please. I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Okay. We will get to work. On the next item is, well, four and five are related every, we probably need for the clerk a little clarity, Luda. Let me take the motion and the second to approve the grant purchasing exemption. And then I'll need a second motion, unless you're satisfied, Luda, with how we did it.
You can do the second motion, so that way you can select.
Commissioner Chesney, I need another motion.
Sure.
To select Hanson.
So moved.
And a second.
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Number six has also come before us many times, but we now have.
We're, we're still, you know, we've already prepared the agreement and everything. So the other side is looking at it and wants to meet with us. So they want us to post, you know, table this.
Okay.
But I would not suggest December 3rd, because that's when we're actually going to meet and discuss it further. So maybe at the end of December, the.
December 18th?
Yes.
All right.
Hopefully that'll.
I'd like a motion to table to December 18th.
Second with hope and prayer. That's the last time we tape.
We are meeting on the 4th. I don't know.
Or we could just table it and we'll just bring it back.
Do you want to just put it on the 4th, if her meeting's?
Yeah, let's put it on the 4th and, and it's just a placeholder. We've just got it on go. I think it goes on every meeting.
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll table to the 4th.
Thank you.
I need a second to the table, please. Take your motion. And I've got a motion and a second from Gonzalez. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Judge, on the previous item five, you had a motion and a second to select. You actually have the contract there as well to approve.
Thank you for the catch. Let's, let's get underway with that. So I will go back and ask for the motion to, to approve the contract that's before us. And county attorney, you've reviewed it and it's in order.
Yes.
Commissioner Chesney?
We need to move that, too?
Yes.
Okay, so moved.
And I need a second?
Second.
And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign.
Got a lot of moving today.
Yeah, it was a semicolon. It didn't quite look like a second item. So sorry about that. Okay. At this time, we're going to move into number seven, which is the discussion and to consider restructuring the organization and the renaming of Noises County Animal Control.
And Judge, Lisa Bockhold did speak on this and public comment. I, she's still here, but I didn't know if she wanted to comment and had to go somewhere, but I'd just like to point out that she's still here.
She's here. Okay, well, let's, she did. She gave us a great preamble and, and anyway, I think the idea is, is that if we need you, Lisa, to bolster our hands, we invite you up. But let's go ahead and tackle some of the issues that are addressed in item number seven, which is, I guess we could start with the organization. Juan, you're also here. Come on up, Juan. And, and then the renaming. Let me kind of start with the name and.
Judge, Commissioners, I was trying to get a, an advisory with regards to the scope and the scope of the Advisory Committee
Okay.
and everything. And unfortunately, I didn't get it done by today. So you can discuss it, you can do, you know.
That's fine.
But I did want to let you know that I was going to provide you something in writing.
And, and just kind of, as I say, you have me in suspense now, ma'am. Tell me just a little bit about the nature. Is it the naming, or is it the restructuring?
You can name it. It's not a problem.
So let's try to take some actions today.
The only thing is just the scope. It's, it's, you know, county can only do what the statutes give you the authority to do. And so basically, the authority of, of the county is, is kind of limited. And so, but you can.
Well, but then we don't want to name something that we can't do. So she suggested three different parts of the name. So if the scope says we can't do it, I don't want to name it, and then we have to take it back. So.
I haven't, I mean, I haven't, from the looks of it, we can't have, I mean, perhaps we can have a program to obviously care for the animals, but really, the scope of, of the authority is with control. It's limited.
What do you mean with control?
Basically, that, you know, he can only enforce the orders of the court, and the court has passed a rabies program and has passed a second one, but I don't remember the other one. So he's responsible for actually making sure that the facility abides by the requirements, the training that has to be done, the certification that has to be, yeah, so all those things. It's kind of limited.
So does that mean that all the counties then in the state of Texas must have the same title? Does that mean that if we go look at other counties, they're not going to have different nuances in the name?
I don't know that for a fact.
Okay.
Because, because, because I, my question is then, if that's the case, well, then someone somewhere is, is allowing for that to happen. And I know we got to go with your opinion, but that would be my question on here, because, I mean, we adopt out, that's not.
And then maybe, that's what I'm saying.
She's saying she doesn't know. And I think that she's just, she's just saying she'd like to give.
Yes, I want to, I want to make sure that.
Okay, so let's just have a, let's have a, let's have a discussion. And, and I'm going to invite Lisa up here in just a moment. But let me go backwards in time here and appreciate that to take action, we can hold till December 4th. But, but at least let me kind of bring forward what the concept was. And that is, Lisa said it best. You have to evolve over time. What, the way we treated services yesteryear is not the way that we know we treat today. Let me give you a anecdotal example. Recycling. There was decades where we threw our trash away indiscriminately, and nobody said anything about it. We then became aware of our environment, and we started on a worldwide recycling campaign, right? It takes a while to create that involvement. The same is true for services that we render for, for animals. And what we now know is that there are opportunities to care for animals, not just control them. In fact, the very word "control" is negative, where the word "care" is positive. And so in the, in the world of your control, which is why you were under the Health Department, you're still caring for animals. I mean, that's, that's just Wikipedia's definition of care. They're under your care. They're under your supervision, right? And so we sought to work with the board and Lisa, who's kind of the de facto, I guess, group organizer and leader there. Hey, share with us what some of your thoughts are to modernize the structure. We had already spoken with the Health Department about their willingness to have animal care be a separate department, allowing, Juan, more autonomy in the decision-making processes, particularly for efficiencies. And then we talked about the words. And so some of the words that were developed from the board, and I have them here in your packet, were animal care and control.
Can you have control and care?
You can. That was one of the suggestions. That was one of the questions.
Whether or not, under the statutes, you can imply that and you can have a program. So, I mean, I'm, obviously, I am.
I think what she proposed was awesome, but I don't want to do anything until you tell me that we're, because I don't want to false advertise either. If we can't do it or not supposed to do it, then I don't want to put it in the name. So if, so to me.
Well, we're doing it right now. We are taking care of animals right now.
Yeah, I, I'm just, the lawyer raised it. I'm just.
Yeah, yeah. No, I hear you.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I think it's awesome. The proposal's awesome. I thought what she said was awesome. As long as we can do it, that's all. So, I mean, I don't know what to do today, other than to say, I think it's awesome. But look, can we wait for the attorney? I mean, I don't.
If, in fact, it's allowable, then what I could do is prepare an order for the court, basically saying that's the program. You know what I mean? Just like you have an order of the court for rabies and, but that's what I'm looking at. Can we, under the existing statutes, allow you to have this program?
Make a motion that we table it to the 4th, give you time to give us back your advisory, okay? In that time, we can take it in action.
I would second that. Is that enough time? The 4th or?
I think so, because, yeah, I had already started it.
Okay.
Yeah, because we've been talking about this for a while. Yeah.
And just so you know, in a couple minutes, we've been talking. So I've looked up some of the biggest counties in the state. Bear, Travis, Hidalgo, and Harris all say animal control services.
Just control?
Animal control services. So I'm not saying that we can't, but that's kind of the standard that you find from the five biggest or four biggest.
And can you find out as well, too, you know, if that's the case, you have to keep the name. Can you find out if we can change mission statement and that? So because what's happening is, whether we like it or not, it's not just, you can say animal care all you want to, but if you're euthanizing dogs, that is not caring for them, in my opinion. So I think the goal is that we stop doing that as much as we can, stop doing that. I hope 100%, but I know that's a big goal. But can you check into all of that? Thank you.
Yeah, I, look, I think the goal is, you know, Juan, you're in favor. You would not be opposed, maybe I should not say you're in favor, but you would not be opposed, and you think it would create better efficiencies to have our own department.
Yes, ma'am.
And would it be also beneficial for the community to see a positive word being inserted, like animal care and control?
It will be positive, yes, ma'am. But at the same time, we, we don't want to say something that we're not going to do, yes.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and, and that's, all I'm saying is that we need to be thoughtful about, you know, what it is that, that we are trying to do. And it would shock me greatly, but then again, we did have a constitutional amendment on allowing a canine to be able to go back to its owner. So nothing is really, like, off limits in the state of Texas as far as inefficiencies. But, but let's make sure that we're reading it to our benefit. In other words, when we look at the law, we can look at it in the light most favorable, and I'm going to ask you to look at it in the light most favorable. Don't tell me how we can't do it. I want to know how we can do it. And I promise you, there's got to be a way that we can do it. And the reason I know that is because there's activists all over the state of Texas who would be promoting such activity. And remember, as long as, as long as we, we have this discussion, it sounds like there's a will, if it's legal, to be able to change it to animal care and control.
I'll call for the questions.
Well, I don't think we can get a question. We're going to have to table it.
Right, that's.
I have a motion and a second to table to the 4th, to allow the county attorney to get an advisory.
Right. But what she wants to know is, she wants directions so she can prepare, if that's your will.
I, I am. I mean, I, I know what the court wants.
There was also another one called Noises County Animal Services. And just so you know, I've seen lots of counties have that name, lots. So you do not have to have the word "control" in your name. I'm 100% sure of that. And so, it's vague, but. Well, like I said, there's a few lawsuits I don't mind trying, and that would be one of them. But, okay, all right.
There's a difference between municipalities and unincorporated. And perhaps the unincorporated needs to be evaluated in terms of the statutes.
Yeah.
But unfortunately, all we can do is what we have. And so that's why I'm trying to see, can something be inferred from the existing statutes?
Mm-hmm. Juan, okay. Send me a, send me a copy of the statute, too, so I can take a look. I want to see a copy of it. For heaven's sakes, the things that we create for ourselves. Okay, well, Lisa, Juan, do you have anything else to add before? We're just going to call for a table, tabling at this time. All those in favor, tabling to December 4th, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Okay. All right. We now have number eight, which is the reorganization and reclassification of certain positions, the Law Library and the other Noises County Libraries to be under the direction of the County Librarian. Julie, if you don't mind, coming back up. And this is, this is a zero fiscal impact.
Hopefully so, yes.
Hopefully so. But it's necessitated because of the retirement of Abraham in our reorganization of the County Law Library under libraries of Noises County.
And here again, we're touching on evolving. Mr. Gonzalez had been in that position for 40 years. And so after his retirement, we took a look at it, and we decided to, or I'm recommending that we put the Law Library under the direction of our County Librarian, Ida Garza, so we can have it grouped together. And by doing so, what I'd like to do is create a, we've, we've revised the job description for one to upgrade it to the new technology and what goes on, what needs to be done in that department now. And by doing so, what I'm going to do is, I'm asking that we increase Ida's position by one pay group. And then I'm also going to create a new library clerk to take on some of the responsibilities at the Robstown Library also. And Ida currently has a temporary fund. And so what I want to do is transfer temporary monies also to create this new full-time position. And Ida, you can speak on what you've discovered in that department over the couple of last months. Yes.
Good morning. Yes, we have discovered a lot of, we had to do a lot of work at the library in the past three months that we've been working there. For one, it needs a lot of automation, which it has never had. And right now, thank you, this morning, y'all did approve the Tucker Grant that was on the agenda this morning. And I think that's going to be about $140,000 that we are going to submit for the Tucker Grant. That is to get all of the automation that we need in the library to keep us going for a while. And, because it does not have automation. None of the books have been catalogued. And we don't know why, but it just never did. So I've been here 12 and a half years, and I got, from the statute, the County Librarian is supposed to be in charge of the Law Library. Why it wasn't, I have no idea. So when I came on board, I just had the Keach Family Library and the Bishop Branch. And so now, you know, we don't have a problem. I do have a little bit of legal background. I, I did have an associate's in legal assisting and political science, so I do have a little bit of knowledge. And Jeanne Garza is the person that we are going to move from the Keach Family Library to, since she does have a lot of experience in librarian. And so we're going to do a transition. And then we're going to have the Youth Services Librarian position available, which she's vacating. And we're going to have a transition. So it'll be a while before we get everything up and going again in our library. But we have had a lot of things happening, and we're trying to do the best that we can with what we have, and we will move forward with what we have been given.
Judge, fiscal impact zero, sounds good to me. This looks like a very good plan. I would move, except. I would move acceptance.
It is, and we're also gonna be open for the first time during lunch and allow someone to take a lunch. Uh I've got a motion, I think I heard a second, by Commissioner Gonzalez. And all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm so excited about that one. I can hardly stand it, but I know when I'm winning, and I'm just I'm hushing and going to the next one.
Very good judge.
But that I'm learning, but I have to tell you, it's gonna be an exciting sixth floor. I hope your county attorneys really enjoy it. It's really meant for you all and for the district attorneys, as well as uh the Bar Association, both local and 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 from out of 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 our jurisdiction. How about the next one? Tyner, will you take us through the um or we actually asked Kevin, oh, there we go, Kevin, great.
I can give a little background.
That would be great, and then please allow Julie and Kevin to to give some background as well.
So it's been brought to our attention from a voter's group, also the Senator's Office, that um we are capable capable of locally in the building or elsewhere actually ultimately provide services that would allow people to get their uh voter's ID um here in the building as opposed to going out to the DPS building. So there's a program that's statutorily authorized um that allows us in-house to provide a voter ID rather than somebody, you know, going all the way out to DPS. We've received um or it's been brought to our attention that it's difficult to get to the building out there at DPS uh by bus or otherwise. But um Julie was tasked by the judge. Um we did have a meeting with the Senator about this, who was supportive. I think we even got a support letter from uh Representative Terry Canales.
We did.
Um as well, to move forward with this program. But so the exciting thing about it is, we're trying to figure out a way to offer that service in this building uh to provide an ID that's good enough to get your voter registration rather than somebody going out to the DPS office.
And really, I'll say, a good voter ID.
A voter ID.
Yes, just as a just as a.
You don't need ID to get your your.
I gotcha.
Registration.
But we knew what you meant.
Okay.
Just just for clarification.
So anyway, Julie started doing the legwork, and we uh brought Kevin into the fold, and so we'd like to talk about moving forward.
Okay, great. So um Kevin, um I'm gonna let you kind of put your two cents in. You and I've had lots of discussions about this. I just want to uh piggyback on what you said. It's about a mile and a quarter from the nearest bus stop to the mega site. It's a fantastic DPS mega site. We love it, but it does create accessibility issues from people all over our county.
Well, it's designed for drivers and people.
It's designed for drivers.
And people who need the voter ID.
Yeah.
Don't drive.
That's right. And there's no other place they can get their voter ID but the DPS.
DPS is is. It's a DPS.
So where where's this money coming from?
Money.
It's an increase if we do it.
No.
No, go ahead, Kevin.
No, the right, but there's.
It's two parts.
There's two parts to this thing, but we're we're not gonna be doing any increases. And the reason for that is 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 that we can't transfer that operation under the county. There there's statutory uh issues regarding that. Uh the the voter registration can either be under a tax assessor collector, it can only under county clerk or an elections administrator. Those are the only options. So so that item can that that can't happen.
So we're not transferring.
Not transferring anything. It's gonna stay under my office, and we and so.
I like that.
What we're gonna do also looking moving forward, though, is we are looking at down the road of potentially issuing driver's license renewals through our office. We gotta figure out a way to do that, though.
Kind of like a two-phase project, just like you and I think would be best.
Yeah, and the county can get up to ten dollars per transaction on those. However, there's some ongoing issues with DPS and the way those transactions run right now, they're in the process of updating their their system, because currently the fee that the county would receive for their driver's license renewals has to be done as a second transaction. I really don't like that idea, and it's been a problem in other counties. So kind of let them work through the weeds on that and let them get that situation fixed. Also, with the potential DPS moving to to DMV, I mean, the driver's license portion moving to DMV, there may be some future changes on that in the future as well within the next two years, because there's a currently, there's a study going on with that. But there is potential fee income for the for the county, and also obviously makes things a lot easier for people to come to us just for a simple renewal rather than having to go down to to the mega center. And so it's it it's a good opportunity for us to make A, make additional revenue, B, possibly, you know, uh just offer another source of or another place for people to come and and renew those, but we need to let some things settle out of that process first, but it's something that we definitely want to look at.
And I think Homeland Security is gonna require, as of June one, twenty twenty, everyone's gonna have to have that new driver's license that has that special seal on it. So this, it's good for us to kind of settle settle in with this phase one piece of it, and then we might be just in time, ready to to tackle the next phase if we work out some of the issues.
So what are we doing today?
So the only thing you need to do today is is just authorize us to to move forward with DPS to issue those uh those voter IDs.
So no.
And and we can use existing staff to do that.
So no new people?
No new people, no. Keep it under us.
Sometimes the statutes work for us because.
Well, actually, this one doesn't, but I'm gonna I I want to go ahead and get it passed, and I'll say something. Let me just say this, that that I'm really, we've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. For the county clerk, it's really important that it's not as red in the agenda, uh that the the motion is that that we do pursue the DPS um uh voter ID access point. It's under the Texas Transportation Code. That's how the statute does help us. But let me just say that, you know, it's always been a source of pain and hurt for the minority community that voter registration is in a tax office. This is because all our grandparents, including mine, keep the record of that pain uh as poll tax receipts. And one of these days, we need to graduate. And I'm sorry, the statute doesn't allow what we proposed, because the Secretary of State's office, we had contacted them through Senator Nahosas. There is a really good reason to be able to have an independent, but the problem is the statute wants us to do it in a completely different way that would cost putting together a whole new department. And I'm really sad about that, because it's but lucky for us, we have a really good tax assessor who's very mindful of that source of pain. And quite frankly, I appreciate when you tell me that's not the legacy that that we want to carry on and.
Judge, what you could, I mean, what could happen, because I I agree with that part of it. I don't think it ought to go under the Commissioner's Court, because I don't think that's the business we're in, but you could put it under the like the county clerk, which would take away what your perception is, and I think that's allowed, and I'm not trying to, sorry, I'm not trying to do that to Kara, because she's not here, but but to take away the the pain that you're talking about and getting out of the tax assessor, it does provide that it could go under the county clerk, right? Isn't that what you said?
Well, it could. It could, it could definitely, and and actually, it was supposed to be the Commissioner's, we were gonna put it under court administration. I just it got.
No, no, I'm just saying, but but there is another way to get.
There there is a mechanism, but when you get into that, you're really talking about an elections administrator, because you're dealing with voter registration and um elections, and that's just too much for one office.
It's easier your way, it's easier.
So it's easier this way.
No, no, I get it.
Yeah.
But to there is there are ways with the current statutes to get out of the pain of being in a tax office, which I completely understand, and 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 there are the ways, and if we need to look at that, and that's.
Well, eventually, this this community will have to look like other urban communities and work its way to understanding what the best way to handle all elections, and and we'll get there.
Eventually, and and like like you said, the sole reason that that voter registration wound up in the tax assessor collector's office was to do the poll tax.
Yeah.
And that's unfortunate.
It is. But we thank you for Brenda and her whole crew downstairs, who I met this morning. I told them it wasn't right that we talk about their office, and I hadn't gone in there to say hello in a long time. So I went downstairs to say hello and met some wonderful people that you just brought in, because we're in the season, right? And um so the the office is very active with both our permanent and our temporary workers, and it's really an amazing office, and I want to thank you, Kevin, for for doing a great job.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so um.
Judge, based based on the um.
Yes.
Notice, the motion should be um that the voter registration uh stay with the tax assessor and collector and that he pursue this voter ID program as opposed to.
Sorry, do you want us to redo that?
I thought I said that.
Okay, well, why don't we? You're gonna you're gonna amend.
Yeah, amend.
And I've got a second from Commissioner Chesney. And all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. County clerk, sorry about that.
But Judge, you make a very good point. I mean, truly, and I mean, I'm I'd be happy to look at something like that, too, because we don't want the historical perspective of this to be lost, and the fact that it is under the tax assessor's office does ring bells with people in this community that are serious and significant and we great, we have a wonderful tax assessor, and that's awesome, but uh it we don't, I don't want to overlook that, and if there is a way within the current statutes that we should be looking at that, then I'm all for it. If it's the whether it's the county clerk or one of the other possibl possibilities, or we need to go change the law or whatever, I mean, maybe.
Appreciate that, really do.
No, maybe that's.
Really do. Thank you.
And one other thing, too, is it's also competing interest, because one of the things that during the peak of uh voter registration is also right when we're putting tax bills together.
Oh, my God.
And we're having to deal with with the intricacies of the tax bills and making sure everything's accurate and correct, at the same time when we are looking at trying to push voter registration and get the deadlines for voter registration, because the tax bills go out October one. Usually, the voter registration deadline is around October the sixth or so.
And Judge, maybe this really is something we need to put on our legislative agenda. You raised, I mean, this is a great point. I mean, these are the kind of things that we we want to ratify or we want to eradicate some of our our, you know, some of the mistakes made, and so maybe that's on our legislative agenda to to see if there's another place that we can put it statewide, not just loc- not just here in Nuasis. Let's look at this on a statewide basis, and.
Thank you.
How can how could there be opposition to that?
Great, great point, great point. Thank you. Is there any other questions for Julie or? Okay, so we did have a motion and a second. We did vote, so it was kind of a withdrawal and a new one. Okay, thank you. Well, y'all are good over there. Okay, thank you all so much. Let's move on. Um we uh we skipped ten because we already addressed it, and now we're gonna move into number eleven. I believe it's a state issue, isn't it correct?
Yes, Judge, um I get a supplement amount where I can use it for um county employees' salaries and and I disperse it. The amount that had been annually provided to me was seventy thousand. This last legislative session, they um they voted on raising it, but unfortunately, I didn't know how much it was raised from seventy thousand. Um and so I normally do this at the time of the budget, and unfortunately, I didn't have that amount. And of course, Dale did contact me and said, hey, it's eighty-four thousand now, not seventy. So that's why I have to get an approval from the court, because obviously, this is past the budget time, so.
So what do you need approval for?
Just to accept it.
To to do the eighty-four thousand as opposed to seventy thousand, and I identify it, I.
Yeah, this is increasing the supplemental pay for the attorneys that 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 are listed by the county attorney's office. So that wasn't in my book. An increase in in salaries.
So moved. Thank you. Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay, we now are gonna move to number twelve to discuss and consider the execution of a personal service agreement with P and M Commercial Operations to perform construction and project management services for um well, this is in effort to assist Coastal Parks with a recovery of I.B. McGee. Hi, Scott.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning. Everything in order here?
Every everything's in order. Uh they have the the three originals. Um thank you so much for letting Belinda help me get this fixed.
This is a personal services contract with Scott Mears, not P and M Commercial Operations.
Yeah.
Right, we need to make that, that's change has been made, though, on the documentation already, just not on our agenda.
Correct. I originally uh was going to do it as a professional, but there is agenda language that like you cited in Agenda Item Number Four, that I inadvertently admitted out of my agenda language. Uh it was my mistake, so this is still a way to keep it going.
I'm I'm happy, as long as it's been corrected, it sounds like everything's in order, and.
And if y'all have any questions for Scott, I mean.
Yes, I see him.
He's here, and uh this this is what what's important about this is is having a third independent professional person to do construction project management is always gonna serve the county a lot better to get our projects on task and on time and in budget and get them delivered properly. Um it's you don't want the same person grading your own homework, period. And so, you know, we've tried it both ways in the past in Coastal Parks, and uh you know, previously, we would let our engineer of record do all that. Well, that just doesn't always work out for you. It's good to have a third independent person doing it. And the thing that I like about Scott is Scott is not an engineer. He's a construction project management professional, has been doing this over twenty years, so he understands the application and theory of means and methods of putting stuff together in the field versus designing it, how it works, how it doesn't work, so.
That's great. Okay, do I have a motion to approve as amended to Scott Mears oper- uh op- it's just Scott Mears, it's not.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
So moved.
And a second, please? A second? Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Thanks, Scott Cross and Scott Mears. Number thirteen is discuss and consider the approval for the Contract Agreement Amendment, and this is between Nuasis County and the Coastal Bend Council of Governments. It's Area Agency on Aging, and this has to do, Edward, with the increased rate for home-delivered meals that we provide. Go ahead.
Yes, um essentially, we're gonna get thirty-six cents more. It was part of the uh the the last legislature. Um we went up from four ninety-five to five thirty-one per meal, and it's gonna be a total about fifty-seven thousand dollars extra coming into the county, so.
Right. And do we do we make adjustments as well, given that we have the extra dollars for increased supplementation on proteins or anything like that? I mean, do we?
No, generally, what the what y'all do as a county, y'all y'all put in like a million dollars. We get about three hundred thousand dollars back, so this is just a way to pay for the existing program and reduce the cost to the county.
So we don't make any adjustments, it's just a reallocation?
Correct.
Okay. All right, is there any questions of Edward on this? Hearing none, how about a motion to approve? And a second? A second? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. Um moving along, we've got Public Works, and Juan, welcome.
Judge, before he.
There is a Tissin, yes?
Before he starts, if I could, on on number three that he's going to discuss, I'd like to move to table the part about County Road 33 and just just that part, not the rest of it. And the.
Okay, I think we have some new information. Before you table, let me get you some.
Okay.
Very broad-based language on that, but you still may want to table, but let me let you hear something that came in.
Just don't know where the city's going yet and I don't want to spend money.
And I think he had a, I agree with you, so we'll, we'll, let's, let's get there in just one second. Let's do the discuss and approve the gold service agreement with Tissin Crupp and this is the Elevator Corporation for the Elevator Maintenance in the courthouse and this would be to allow me to sign the documents that we need, is that correct?
That's correct, Judge. We're, Public Works is recommending the county judge to sign the gold service agreement with Tyson Crump.
So moved.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It's amazing how fast elevators need to get fixed, how fast people want me to sign stuff.
One and two, do they go together or what?
Uh, no, two is totally different. One is all maintenance.
Yeah, correct.
Okay, let's talk about two. This is the modernization proposal. Again, you're asking this commission to.
Yes, Judge.
To let me sign.
We're recommending authorization to the judge.
And has everyone had an opportunity to look at the the details? Okay.
Second.
Great. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
You want me to proceed with item three, Judge?
Uh, yes, I just want to say that I want to thank you, I don't know if you know this or not, but this morning I got a, just a preliminary look at the signs that will say coming soon, 2020, 2021. I made a slight adjustment on one of it, but these are going to be really great so that everybody in the tower understands and and of course the main courthouse as well what our timeline is once we pass this, so I think that communication piece we talked about.
Yes, ma'am.
Is fantastic. And also on these contracts, had they made the modifications that we asked for?
Yes, ma'am, my understanding is yes.
They are in there, okay. I'd like to go, I'll go over them with you guys again. Okay, thank you. Let's go to three. Three has to do with our capital improvement project specifically as it pertains to county roads. Take us through them. Let's put 33 last. Take us through the first three.
Uh, Judge, we're going to recommend to court, Public Works is going to recommend to court to amend probably 33 and County Road 69 from 52 to the Robstown city limits. But let's go to item number for Fries and Nichols. Fries and Nichols, Inc. is recommended to, for County Road 73 from 624 to Rock Island. LNV, Inc., from County Road 67 from State Highway 44 to County Road 28. In regards to to the one for Hanson, Judge.
Yes.
We are going to recommend, and that's the piece of paper that was distributed to y'all, to go to, the limits are going to be from County Road 48 from FM 1889 to County Road 69. And and I would also include as part of that, as part of the amendment is to go from County Road 48 to the city limits of Robstown. That way, since there's another project that's out there as part of the CDBG that's from County Road, it's on County Road 69, but from 52 to 48, so that'll complete this whole intersection, this whole area.
Okay, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna have that amended, so when we approve Hanson, it'll be from County Road 48 to FM 1889. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And then the elimination of 52.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, real quick, Judge.
Okay.
On Hanson, it's from County Road 48, I mean, it's on County Road 48 from FM 1889 to County Road 69.
And what, okay, and then and then the 52 to the Robstown city limits will be tackled by the CDBG?
Well, the, and then in addition, from 48 to the city limits, that way, that whole intersection.
Oh, that whole intersection, okay. So does that, did the clerk understand that? It's going to go from 48 at FM 1889 to 69 and then 48 to Robstown city limits?
To the city limits of Robstown.
Okay.
Um, on the other item.
And excuse me, but that's going to affect my capital improvement plan numbers. Can you make those adjustments, please?
Yes, ma'am.
And send those back to me?
Yes, ma'am, we're trying to keep it all within the same budget.
Right. Are you, oh, you still think it'll be about the same distance?
I think so, Judge, but we'll look at it.
All right, and then.
On the other item.
Excuse me, Juan, on the county attorney's part, would you like us to do these separately as individual road awards? If so, let me go ahead and have a motion for LNV, County Road 67, Highway 844 to County Road 28. I've got a motion. Do I have a second?
Which one, I'm sorry?
That's the, I'm taking them from the backwards order. County Road 60, we have to approve them individually.
The LNV one, is that what you're saying?
LNV, County Road 67 from.
A second.
Okay, I've got a second. All those in favor of that award signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. And then the Fries and Nichols is County Road 73 from 620, Farm Road 624 to Rock Island Road.
So moved.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
A second? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. I I know I'm like hearing the faintest little ayes, but are we good? Aye, everybody?
Don't hear nothing.
I hear nothing, I hear nothing.
Nothing is an aye.
Okay, okay.
We were just waiting for you, Judge.
All right. Hanson Professional Services is the one we just spoke about, the County Road 48 at FM 1889 to County Road 69 and 48 to the Robstown city limits. All those in favor signify by saying, I need a motion.
So moved.
And a second? Hearing a motion, a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. And and just so we know, this is just for design only?
That's correct.
Engineering.
Design.
When we, you're going to come back to us on an RFP for construction?
Yes, ma'am, there's, there's some, yes, ma'am, that's correct.
I just want to keep everybody knowing what we're doing here. As they say, the peanut gallery speaks. Come on, Fred, tell me what you mean.
So when we go to do the actual construction, it's going to be an IFB? I just want to clarify.
I like that, okay?
I I have a question. I'm a little loopy today because I'm on medication, so I may be seeing something I'm not. So in the beginning, we were going to do County Road 69 from 52 to 1889 to, you're you're not doing 52 back?
That's part of the CDBG project, Commissioner.
Okay, and that's why it's not in there?
Yes, ma'am. That's kind of, we had to kind of.
All right, just making sure because I know there's a stretch there.
Do you also, do you also have 60, 665 to 67? Wasn't supposed to be on there or not?
It was not on the.
I don't know what, you know, and we talked, I think we talked about that one that's.
Can I go, can I get back to you on that one? Because I'm not exactly sure.
I think that's, that's CDBG.
That's CDBG as well, yeah. I was going to say, let me get back to you, see if that's on my first list.
Yeah.
Okay, so for the purposes of everybody watching, so what we've done is we have some roads that are submitted, four roads for our CDBG, that's the Community Block Development Grant Program, and what's a 4.4 million dollar grant approximately that we're waiting on. We've declared which roads we'd like to see. These roads, the dollars, the funding source will be our our COs that we have been funded and we're going to get to work. So we'll be working on four roads simultaneously, just in this lump of money and hopefully four more. It's going to be a good and busy year. What about, let's talk about, okay, help me out. Give me a second, Clerk, have we, do you need us to vote on on that last one? Okay, we, I think we had a motion and a second, though, already.
Modest and Jack.
Modest and Jack. And so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. And Carolyn, I've got the notes for you, but it, just so you're writing it down, it's 48 from Farm Road 1889 to 69.
Thank you.
That's the clarification. And it still goes to the Robstown city limits. It just, the 52 piece of it is going to tackle from another tranche of dollars. Now, let's talk about, and let's talk very generally, since we don't know too much. County Road 33 from FM 43 to one mile north, it's not that we all don't support, it's that we understand that the city might have interest in that road. Tell us what you know as of yesterday afternoon.
My understanding, I talked to Dan McGinn with the City of Corpus Christi, what he had mentioned was that they annexed part of 33, which is about, I think, I think it's about 1,000 linear feet of 33, but they didn't annex the whole County Road 33. My understanding is that they do want to sit down and talk about County Road 33 sometime next week, so we'll schedule a meeting regarding that.
Judge, just for further clarification of the court, the discussions that have been going on for quite some time, this, the new city manager acknowledged that they should have annexed this to begin with, but they didn't. We have sat down with them and said, look, we will participate in something with you and I'd set aside some money of some of my COs to do this and then we also, you'd put it in the CIP and we talked about it being a CIP, but now I've, my understanding is they're talking about possibly making it like a C3 collector or something like, way more than what we talked about, so that's, that's the part of the conversation that has to be had and I don't know really how to do 33 in a manner. It needs to be done in some manner, but there's going to be a ton of construction going down that road for the next 10 years, so I don't know how to do that without it like getting torn up. So what may have, what may need to happen, and there are some other roads with all the development and growth that's going on in that area, there may be some other county roads that we may want to look at instead of this one in our CIP. So I just want the court to know like everything that I know and 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 I've been kind of wa- waiting and I'm not trying to throw anybody on the bus, but we had a meeting and I've been waiting to hear back from the city as to when they want to meet so that we can discuss and see what it is they're talking about because like I say, if it gets to a C3, which it may need to be a C3 collector, if it is, you know, that's a, that's a multimillion dollar road, that's not something that we would participate in or have much, have any impact in, but if that's not where they're going, then certainly we may be back at the table with them, but but I've expressed, you know, we need to do something out there because traffic's getting really bad, that school's growing, that area's growing, it's just, it's exploding at the moment, so that's all I know, so I would still want to make the motion.
Do you?
Right.
One of, one of the concerns I had was, did we have an alternative that we could advance? And I asked Juan that and I think he's got something for us.
Yes, ma'am, what we work at, what Public Works is recommending and a part of the handout is to the County Road 77 from 2826 to County Road 30. That's our recommendation.
Where's that? I'm not sure that.
It's on the, it's towards 44, I'm sorry, 77 out towards.
I, Judge, I really don't want, I really want to pause on this because I didn't, I didn't get much in the CIP for roads in my precinct and if you take this this out and start shoving it somewhere else, then then.
I have good news. I've, I'm, I have, we have plenty of dollars for roads. If you, if you want, I don't want to, I don't want to take 33 out at all for you.
Right, and I'm just trying to, is this, yeah, I just want to make sure that, yeah, I don't get left out here. I mean.
Well, 1,000 linear feet, I mean, one of my concerns from the city, and you can please ask him this, is, you know, obviously they they would want to pay their pro-rata share of their 1,000 linear feet, I'm sure, but how much, I mean, we're talking about a much larger road.
Yes, by the time you get to collector, now you're doing curb and gutter, you're acquiring additional right of way.
Right, but I've, like, and what I'm trying to get to is I've, but I've got, you know, two or three other county roads that also.
Oh, okay.
May need some immediate attention and what I'm trying to say is if we could just pause on this, since this is the only, I won't say the only, but I think it's maybe the only road I got in the CIP, I just don't, I would like to hold on this one and and get with the judge and Juan and say, okay, here are some other county roads that I think are fixing to really maybe have some factor out there, but I can't do all that right at this moment.
I hear you.
So I'm just asking to table this until that December 18th meeting to give me a little time to go meet with the city, to talk with the judge and Juan about these other roads that I'm looking at to make sure they fit within our CIP plan before I lose my place in line.
I hear you. That's fair. What I'd like to do is have you talk to Juan, though, about your, I want to get your alternative.
Yes, ma'am.
Road in.
Right.
So that if if the city just doesn't work out, you're ready with your alternative.
Yes.
As far as the 77, why don't you and I meet on that road and see what other alternative of funding sources we might have for that one? If that's your, at least I know what's in the queue, right? But I think it can wait till, did you say December 4th or December 18th?
I'd like to wait till 18th because it's going to take me a little time to get with the city, get with the roads, you know.
Okay. Okay, then then I have a motion and a request to table and I need a second.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion is to table two for the clerk, December 18th, just the piece that's been awarded to, or potentially awarded to Jacobs, County Road 33.
If Juan could reach back out to the city, let me know when they're talking about doing because I would like to be there, obviously, and.
Yes, sir, we'll schedule.
But it, I mean, if you could stay on that or you could stay on that because I truly, I've been waiting just to hear back from them.
Okay.
And I'm just going to ask you, even though I know he knows his roads very well, we obviously created our top 10 list, so why don't you see which roads correspond to your top 10 that would also basically meet with the ones that he's looking at?
I'll send you my list and and really what's happened truly is because of this zoning. I mean, this has all happened quickly.
24 hours.
Right, and and I mean, I, I didn't know this was all going to happen this fast and so, and I don't know that all these roads are going to meet the need, I just have started to make a list of them, I'll send you the list, we can go drive them together, whatever we need to do. I'm not sure which ones are right and which ones aren't, but I've got a bunch that I need to look at and kind of narrow down, so.
Juan, I don't know, have you, have you looked at County Road 6 also? Have you done?
Which number?
County Road 6. Six?
It's Bishop, behind Bishop, over the, by the park. Edward, I drove it the other day and it is horrible. But Edward.
And and I do just want to, see, one, two, three, four.
One good, one good piece of that road.
I do want to tell you that the handout that Edward gave you is a great one because it does list our top nine, so if you don't see that road that you're talking about in the top nine, I would encourage you to meet with Public Works and see where it's going to fit in the, in the top 20, right? Okay, I think we're done with that agenda item and so I'm going to move on, Juan, to the Texas Tips contract with Protech and this is for the HVAC unit.
Judge, on this item, we're going to recommend to table it to next court agenda.
Okay.
We're going to recommend to court, in the first court agenda of December, to go with the performance contract and we'll be bringing back that on the first week of December.
Judge, in the way of expanding on this discussion, you had asked if we could look into maybe saving some of this money upfront for other projects, if we could roll this into a performance contract.
We can.
And and actually have the savings pay for this HVAC and lighting is desperately needed at the fairgrounds as well, so.
Okay, so this is going to fit that that bill and so you want to basically bring it back on the, on the 4th to, would you be able to bring that performance?
Yes, ma'am.
Because these guys need their HVAC.
We will.
Okay. I, I'm going to, given that that was my own idea, I'm going to go ahead and say that that's a good idea and 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 ask that we have a motion to do that. I know we've got some questions, so let's get a motion first and then I'll come into discussion.
So moved.
I've got a motion, do I have here a second?
Second.
A second? Now let's call for the discussion, you've got some questions.
So why are we tabling number four? What is it? How come we're doing it? We're not ready for these.
What we can actually do, Commissioner, is get this fixed in a performance contract whereby the actual energy savings will pay for the debt to pay for this and at least one company, I know you know Johnson, they happen to be in the, in the room, but we can not only take care of this HVAC in a performance contract, we can also add lighting, which is desperately needed. It's ABM, I'm sorry. God, I'm, I'm sorry, Edward, Edward was biting my ear. It's ABM and they've indicated to us that this, this project can be done through cost savings and so that's what we want to bring back next court.
The six-figure amount to purchase.
188,000 plus. I know that lighting is desperately needed throughout the fairgrounds, they're actually harvesting lighting from.
Right, no, I'm aware.
Less, less used portions of the building and installing it and other.
So this isn't going to delay us too much, Juan, if we bring it back on the 4th so we can get this done and ordered?
It won't delay us, Judge.
Okay.
Building not paid later, huh?
Yes.
But we can use those dollars for other projects and of course that interests me, which is why I, I wanted you guys to investigate.
Just for this, without the lighting, this is 188,000, I think. think.
I think the lighting's a big piece of it.
Okay.
Okay, I've got a sec, excuse me, a motion and a second, and all those in favor of the table to the fourth signify by saying aye. Aye. Oppose, same sign.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. If you would let Jason Green know out there so he doesn't be concerned, Edward, that we are moving forward. The next one, did you guys have any, we're good? Okay. Number five is the approval of the change orders of IB McGee RV Recovery Project, and for that, there's nothing on there at all. That's just a, it's gonna be tabled indefinitely? Okay, I need a motion for that, Commissioner Chesney.
I've got a question on that.
Okay, hold on.
Can we all do that then? Put a change order there? We don't have change orders? I mean, I'm just saying, I mean, what's...
Well, I think there is no change order, it's a mistake, or forgive me?
We put it on there permanently, right? I've lost my agenda, I'm sorry.
Here.
It can be permanently, I mean, is it, when you have it, you put it on there?
No, I put it on as a placeholder, because when the change orders happen, sometimes they happen quickly, and we don't know four days in advance, so we have it on there as a placeholder if it's needed. I can do it, I do it every week, I just put it on every week.
Then everybody needs to have a change order there in place already.
I just put it on every week. I mean, that's what I do, I can do that.
It says permanently.
Right, I put it on every week, and we put it on every week. I don't know what the problem is, I mean, you could do that if you want.
What I wanna know is that there's no action item here at this time, Juan, and no action from Coastal, so it's not gonna be...
I just put it on every week, if someone wants to do that, they can, I mean, it's just, it's just a safety net, and so, that's what we do.
Okay, so, I'll just have a motion to table indefinitely?
Indefinitely, forever.
How about a second?
Forever.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
It'll be back on next time.
Okay. Michael, I've got one item under your department, and that's to sole source the procurement of a hydrohoist marine group, seventy-five power port base units, and this is for Coastal Park, and I had to ask you what that meant, and I learned all about power point base units.
Okay, yes, this is sole source purchase. The RV park facility was damaged as a result of Hurricane Harvey, and this item addresses the specific RV pedestal hookups out at the RV park. This provider, High Power, is the sole source provider of this equipment, and this equipment was submitted in a FEMA application by Coastal Parks, is actually at the recommendation of FEMA that we use this item, and FEMA subsequently approved the use of this item, and so that's the quote you have before you today of the seventy-three thousand five hundred and thirteen for seventy-five of these units. It's being funded out of the oh-one-oh-four-one thousand six IB McGee Campground Electric Fund, and we recommend approval.
And hearing that you recommend approval, do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, so moved, sorry, can't talk.
Okay. And I've got a motion and a second, and are there any questions of Michael?
I have a question, is this for connections for...
Yeah, I'll let Scott speak to it, he's the expert.
This is the actual pedestal where the RV gets its twenty, thirty, and fifty amp power hookup, and it's got its water hookup, yeah.
Also the electricity.
Yeah, it's really, it's a really nice pedestal, but what, Judge, it's important that the court knows here, as we start doing recovery issues on the coast, one of the things is we wanna build resiliency into our recovery, we wanna want it stronger and better, we wanna mitigate for future issues. The thing with this pedestal is, is that it can actually be disconnected from its connection point on the concrete pad and moved out of harm's way, and then replaced back at a time when you do have electricity restored, thereby trying to create that opportunity we spoke of at the groundbreaking, to where we have a forward area for people to start staging TDM or play people like that, which we didn't have before. So, and it's under, this is under the ninety percent award that we got from FEMA under the Public Assistance Grant Program, and you'll be glad to know that the unit pricing for the electrical grid recovery and this, which we applied for, that total cost right now for all those is still under the ninety percent award, so we're not gonna have to go into our ten percent. You know, not that, maybe that's TMI, but...
No, no, it's not, it's good to know, actually. Thank you. I don't wanna spend any more money.
All those, and we have a motion and a second, any further discussion needed? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, great, we've got one capital project change order, Dale, and you can take us through it?
Yes, Your Honor, this is our capital projects, which is dealing also with some of our capital improvement bounces. We're reallocating some funds, closing some projects that have been finished to do that. For example, on the very first, we have nineteen fifteen, which is our two thousand and four COs, which we're trying to get our bounces spent, 'cause we only have a small amount of funds left. We're able to move some of the warehouse HVAC, was paid with another source, so those funds can be outreallocated, and we will be moving those to the fifth floor renovations that July, so it's fit. Commissioner Gonzalez has reallocated some of those funds to the Bishop Building, re-roofing the area of twenty-eight thousand. Under nineteen nineteen, which is our two thousand and fifteen COs, we see we have moved some money around. Again, we have some fifth floor engineering services that we have a purchase order for, and we're establishing the entire amount that we need for the Horace Caldwell Pier at the very bottom. We've already had the bounces that Commissioner Chesney has put in, this is the bounce that, Your Honor, you're putting in of three hundred thousand for the county side of the six hundred thousand, and with the inclusion of the port of two fifty, which is not a part of COs, but this is how we're reallocating the funds. For our two thousand and sixteen COs, we're seeing, we're doing a little bit of modification of some bounces to cover some bounces we needed for IT, Evidence Room is where the biggest one would be, which is very bottom, which we're working on getting the bounces for, Engineering Services as well. The funds that are here are all being closed, reallocating for some small minor exceptions we needed for, example, the fire alarm system needed a little bit of extra money because of cost overrides, but we had funds available in the Court's House Scottlets that we were, we had decided to change to a different funds. These are the funds that are available for reallocation for our capital projects, and we submit this for your approval.
So, just kind of a nice summary, is that we're able to use old COs to take care of all the needs that we kind of had addressed.
Correct.
With Bishop, Evidence Room, and the multipurpose room.
That's correct.
Okay. Are there, yeah, it's really great, and again, how are we doing on the residual dollars?
For example, the two thousand and fifty, the two thousand and four COs, we were right about three hundred thousand dollars. I know I'm gonna be working with Commissioner Chesney here on Friday on some of the stuff he has for IB McGee, there's about a hundred and forty thousand for Coastal Parks that we may be able to reallocate, so we'll be able to spend some of that down. I know a few of the commissioners have a small amount of money, it's not a lot, it's...
We're doing good.
We're trying to get it all spent, I know Commissioner Modis already said he's willing to put some stuff in as well as Commissioner Vaughn, so we'll get that all spent for, and get two thousand and four completely spent as quickly as we can.
Commissioner Modis and I looked at a really interesting, I'm gonna call it a walkway, that really could use some attention at one of the major parks, and so I don't know if there's any dollars there, but if you could locate any dollars there, I know that he has a great project that I would highly support.
It depends on the cost, but I can give you a rough estimate on some of this, and we can go, if we see if it's for the entire county, we may be all together to allocate enough funds to do it for the entire fund to get two thousand and four spent.
Okay. Okay, sounds good. On this change order, Commissioners, we do need to approve it, so I do need a motion to approve this change order, it's number seventy-five.
So moved.
And, thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, at this time, I'm giving notice that the Commissioners' Court has elected to go into executive session. We can do so as authorized by the provisions of the Open Meetings Act, chapter five-five-one of the Texas Government Code. In the event the Commissioners' Court elects to go into executive session, we can do so with the accordance of Vernon's Texas Codes, five-five-one-oh-seven-one-oh-seven-two-oh-seven-three-oh-seven-four-oh-seven-four-five-oh-seven-six-oh-eight-six-and-oh-eight-seven. We will hold this executive session to consult with our attorney, including matters related to litigation, real property, prospective gifts, personnel matters, county advisory bodies, security devices, economic development, and any other matter that may be discussed in executive session. Upon completion of this session, we will come in to open session and take any appropriate action as discussed in our executive session. I'm gaveling this out at eleven forty-two AM. Mics are off. We're gonna go back on the record at two-twenty-two PM, and we are out of executive session. We do have some action to take, and Commissioners, I would be happy to take a motion on the settlement of, item number one, settlement of Laura Woolridge property damage claim. Is there a motion?
The recommendation is that we go ahead and settle for two hundred and fifty dollars.
Is there a motion?
Subject to the release.
A motion? And a second, please?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Commissioners, we've also had the opportunity to interview applicants for the position of veteran service officer. Is there a motion with regard to the selection of such position?
I'd like to make a motion, we, my selection would be Mr. De La Cerda.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second for the position to be filled by Mr. De La Cerda. Is there any discussion? We had great applicants.
I wanna say that number two would be the gentleman, Hader O'Neil?
Yes.
He was very well presented, and I wish we had two slots, and I think that'd be a heck of a team.
Sure would.
You know, but...
One never knows.
But I'm looking for a counselor down the road, too, so who knows?
Right. I think it's why we, as they say, why we do this, right? It's really important to go through the interview process, and we had excellent folks, and thank you, Julie, for arranging those. Hearing no other comment or discussion, all those in favor of approving Mr. De La Cerda as our new veteran service officer signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay. There is no other action in executive session that's needed at this time, and I would take adjournments and memory of...
Judge, I have a couple of items that maybe we can address.
Yes, sir.
That we left pending from this morning.
Yes, sir.
I did communicate with Adam Haynes.
Oh, that's right, on the issue of the personal tax exemption.
Yes, and I think I spoke to Commissioner Chesney, we made some edits, and it's gonna work just fine with these edits. We are putting the period where we discussed earlier, that's gonna work with the CUC, I made the changes, I'd like to pass this out for approval by the court, as presented this morning, but there's a period after owners, and we changed a will to could in the third whereas...
Thank you. Having that being passed out, could I have a motion to recommend passage of that as amended?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, and I'll wait for them to come down the way to sign, but all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign.
And Judge, if y'all would like to go back to the Child Welfare Board, and I did determine that that's a statutory board with no term limits.
Okay. Therefore, term limits are not in play.
Our term limits do not apply today.
Do not apply. Okay, thank you.
So moved, reapportment of the three incumbents, and remind everyone that we're putting that back on the legislative agenda for, to take care of it.
Second.
And a motion and a second, and all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. Okay.
And that's all I have.
Good. And I was just gonna ask, Tyner, through your office, if you would allow Margaret to contact those that we tabled, just to let them know that we tabled it for the advisory? There were others that we tabled, or no?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, we tabled...
You would just let them know?
We're gonna repost regional awareness, we're gonna table Civil Service Commission and Appraisal District.
Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. At this time, I believe we've now concluded with all of the regular agenda, and in fact, the entire agenda in its entirety, and so we will move for adjournments and memory, and I definitely have one. Are there any others, Commissioner Vaughn, Commissioner Modis, Commissioner Gonzalez? Commissioner Chesney and I have one sort of joint.
Go ahead, I've got a couple others, but you go ahead, Judge. No, no, go ahead, please.
I'm very sad to announce the passing of a very dear friend, Elizabeth Alexander Nesbit, who was age eighty-two. She died in Houston peacefully, surrounded by her family, but she lived her whole life, adult life, here in Corpus Christi, and she went to Baylor University Secum Bears in nineteen fifty-eight. She married John Pinky Nesbit, and they raised their family here. She was involved in so many organizations, including Krista Spahn Hospital Foundation Board, the Driscoll Children's Hospital Foundation Board, she was the past president of Las Donas de la Corte, past president of the Junior League, president of the Texas Estate Aquarium, patrons of Orde de Pineda, Coastal Bend Community Foundation Board, and so many others. She was a beloved member of the Church of the Good Shepherd, and she's just gonna be deeply missed by everybody. She was just an incredibly vibrant, beautiful woman who was always engaged in community, and I was thinking about this morning, there were five women that were there when I first ran for office in two thousand and two, that came, that were friends of my mom's, and I just remember not even knowing who she was, and having her be right there in front of the Dr. Hector P. statue at Texas A&M, and she was just such a great supporter of women, and women involved in civic and political discussions, and so I'm just, I'm very sad because she just had a way of illuminating the room, and I think that's what her obituary said, and she was the epitome of grace, and I think all of us that knew her will keep her family in our prayers. She was laid to rest this morning while we were in court. Commissioner Chesney.
Thank you, Judge, and certainly wanna add my condolences to the Nesbit family, what a graceful and wonderful lady she was, you know, you summed it up very well. Also, wanted to add condolences to the Habib family, William Habib, age eighty-seven, passed away peacefully at the home, surrounded by his family. The end of October, he was born in Corpus Christi, and the Habib family has been around in this community for many, many years. They own Buxton Jewelers, and he was the father of Cheryl Habib and Mary Habib that I both, that I knew, and wanted to pass on the condolences to their family. Also, to Steve Burkett, he was a local lawyer here in Corpus Christi, and he passed away recently, his, David Burkett's brother, and certainly will be missed, condolences to the Burkett family. Esther Garcia, who passed away at the matriarch of her family at the age of eighty, and certainly wanna pass on the condolences to that family as well. So, thank you, Judge.
One more, Justice of the Peace, Lorenzo Rios Jr. passed away, I think, about a week ago. Rios has a long, long time, Justice of the Peace in Robstown, and...
Oh, yes.
So, I just prayers to his family and condolences, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Well, it's been another good day here at Neises County Commissioners' Court. I'm really just always so pleased to work with all of you, and we just, we do such good work. We just got a nice compliment outside, someone said, "We just run a really good meeting," and I think we do, but it's a testament to all of us, and I wanna thank the county clerks because you keep up with us, and I'm not sure exactly how with all our withdrawals and tables and motions, and I just wanna thank you for your great work, and please let your boss know, so to speak, that we pay the compliment to the clerk's office. And Tyner, thank you for getting Adam Haynes on the line, that's what we do, when we have a question, we don't just rubber stamp things, we find out how to make them better, and thank you to the county attorney for helping us work through all these nuances of legal,